All right, welcome everyone. I am Barbara, Councilmember, and I'm calling the February 23rd Council Study Order. To start tonight with a land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Duwamish and Snoqualmie Indian tribes. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived in time immemorial. Next, I would like to acknowledge our remote meeting format tonight. On March 6th, 2020, emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, 2020, the governor issued Proclamation 2028 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended or until repealed by the governor or legislature. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. First, there is a general public comment at the beginning of the meeting, or second, you can make comments after the staff presentation and council questions and answers on each item. If anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments, please star 3 on your phone now or under the later comment periods, and we will call on you using the last two digits of your phone number. Council President Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now pick role of the council members in attendance. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Council Deputy President Ray.
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No, no one has signed up in advance to speak, and I don't see any members of the public on the call at this time.
Thank you. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawat.gov. Council President Hunt, did we receive any email comments for tonight's meeting?
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. I reviewed our emails, and we have not received any emails from members of the public or members of the community specifically referencing tonight's agenda items or on these topics since we've last discussed them in a different meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We will therefore move on to the first item on the agenda, which is ID 0813, wildfire strategy. And this will be presented by Robert York, our Public Works Director, Far Chief Jeff Clark of Eastside Fire and Rescue, Laura Whitley, Binder from King County Climate Action Team, and Jared Schneider, King County Emergency Management. And I'm going to turn it over to Robert for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Good evening, councilmembers. Bob York, Public Works Director, with an update on the city and the region's wildfire strategy. Tonight, we have three additional guest speakers, impressive backgrounds that will also help with this presentation. Since Councilmember DeMichelle already introduced them, I'll just move ahead to my slides. Next slide, Tisha, please. Tonight, our agenda consists of a brief background, the City of Isiqua initiatives in terms of wildfire preparedness and response, ESAG Fire and Rescue initiatives, and the King County Regional Initiatives, followed by question and answers. Next slide, Tisha. But the feedback we'd like tonight is, are we headed in the right direction as a region, as a city, as our fire agency? And any additional ideas for short and term, long measures or initiatives would be appreciated tonight. Next slide, Tisha, please. So I'll just briefly mention some of the drivers, short and long term, for why there's this heightened concern about wildfire preparedness in Isiqua. A more detailed conversation's coming up in the subsequent speakers. So wildfire smoke's been an issue in, I think, three of the last five years, caused by fires throughout the region, eastern Washington, Oregon, California, and British Columbia. There have been some local wildfires that have been noted over time. And there's another driver called the Department of Natural Resources or Wildlife, Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI maps, that have shown where developed areas are matching the areas where wildfires or wildlands exist, and that would be the place where we'd focus a lot of our concern about wildfire in the city. So, next slide, please. The future driver, and one of our speakers is the King County Preparedness Manager, Preparedness Program Manager, is climate change. And she'll talk about, or I'll talk about, the future of wildfires in western Washington and specifically King County. So you'll hear more about that in a moment. Next slide. So I'll touch on the City of Isiqua initiatives. Most of our initiatives are done in, because it's wildfire, done in close collaboration and supporting Eastside Fire and Rescue. So we, most of the things we do are closely coordinated and backing up, supporting our fire agency with many of these topics we'll talk about tonight. But we do have a emergency management capability. We have an impressive emergency operations center here in the Public Works Operations Administration Building, where I'm speaking from tonight. We have some impressive programs featuring volunteers throughout the city. One is called the, and it's a FEMA endorsed program, called the Community Emergency Response Team, CERTS. Since 1985, or since 2005, we've conducted over 40 classes and trained over 1,000 citizens that have become more proficient in supporting emergency management efforts, including wildfire. Now, about 150 to 100 to 150 of these CERTS have received additional credentials and are now considered to be, to be our emergency worker volunteers supporting our efforts. Groups of these folks are located and work within, throughout the city of Isiqua. Also, the city's emergency team supports a citizen-led initiative of neighbors, helping neighbors, called Map Your Neighborhood, or MYN-MINE, that is a state-endorsed program. This is a program where citizens, neighbors take the lead and the city and EFOR support, Eastside Fire and Rescue support, where neighbors, helping neighbors get their, figure out the needs and concerns and resources available within their specific neighborhood. This really helps when an emergency really occurs, like before you call 911, during the 911 response, and when help arrives. So neighbors often want to be prepared in their neighborhoods to help their neighbors as part of our active community. The next topic is NPFA, National Fire Protection Association, Firewise USA. I'm gonna just briefly highlight that, but that's a, we closely coordinate with Eastside Fire and Rescue. This is a fire agency-driven program, and we're here to support with the needs of Eastside Fire and Rescue. Public outreach, Isiqua emergency management, prior to COVID especially, but hopefully resuming soon, has always been out there in the, in the community with outreach. Tables at the farmer's market on a monthly basis, the Highlands Day, July 4th Parade, Salmon Days, other events. Again, COVID hampered our efforts, but our desire is to resume those outreach programs, maybe even using creative ways to do that if COVID keeps us from some of these events. Brenda Bremwell, our emergency coordinator, has, over the years, responded to the, some of the biggest wildfires in the country. She's a certified wildfire, wildland firefighting training person. She's, we've, she's been deployed as a Type 1 Pacific Northwest Insane Management Team member for Resource Unit and DMOB Unit 2 wildfires in California, Colorado, Oregon, Washington, Alaska. These programs where she's sent out are reimbursable from the, from FEMA, but she brings back the knowledge that she gains and enhances our preparedness as a city. Another program that we do is open space management, done by our Parks and Open Space Department. Things that they do are range from vegetation selection to pruning and debris, fuel removal, removal of dead and dying trees, coordination with the surrounding open space agencies like Department of Natural Resources, like Tradition, Puget Sound Energy, Bonneville Power Administration, Williams Pipeline, private landowners, state parks, WASHDOT, to coordinate emergency strategies, including wildfires. And finally, as we'll hear from King County tonight, we're involved, we as a city and Eastside Fire and Rescue, in the regional planning efforts. And you'll hear the work in progress and the schedule for defining a regional approach to wildfire management. Next slide, please. The council adopted in June of last year our Isiqua annex and the King County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Well, the page in the, so wildfires resiliency is a priority in our, a plan in Isiqua as well as the regional plan. Our goal is to reduce our risk to people and property from wildfire through the interface potential. Our mitigation strategy is to partner with EFOR to implement Firewise. Our implementation plans and actions are, again, the outreach to the neighborhoods to implement Firewise principles and personal emergency preparedness measures and evacuation processes. And our five-year objective, which is getting a slightly delayed start, is, over the course of 2020 to 2025, we'll meet with 20 neighborhood groups to, that's our goal and objective, to prepare for wildfires. Next slide, please. So last slide's another NF, National Fire Protection Association campaign. So Eastside Fire and Rescue takes a lead on that, but it's the Wildlife Community Preparedness Day effort. Last year was somewhat of a bust because of COVID. This year, we're still optimistic and we'll support, we, the city, resources will support Eastside Fire and Rescue in the, in making everybody aware of the dangers of fire, wildfires, and to enhance preparedness and reduce risks. So with that, I'm going to move to the next slide and turn it over to Chief Clark. Thank you.
All right. Just wanted to test my, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So I'm having some audio issues here. Things are turning out, so hopefully you can hear me okay. So thank you, council, for once again having me back to discuss one of my favorite topics. I want to start off by saying that, you know, this, this presentation is definitely needed, and there are, there are a lot of folks who know what they're doing in the region about wildland fire preparedness. But I do want to state without, beyond a shadow of a doubt, we are not prepared for a wildfire in this region. Okay? So despite all the things that we're doing, we have a lot of work to do over a large number of years moving forward, where we have to apply constant state pressure on our preparedness efforts to continue to prepare our communities and the community of Isiqua to move forward. So please keep that in mind as, as we walk through here, and sometimes it's comforting to hear how many things we have going on, but there's a lot of work to do in these areas, and I just want to put that caution out there. So obviously, I won't read all these to you, but these are the five initiatives that we're going to go over today.
Chief, this is Tisha.
Yes.
Your, your audio is cutting out a bit. Might I suggest you try turning off your camera to see if that helps?
Will do. All right. How's that? Any better?
Not, not really. We, we can, we can keep you posted as to the clarity of your audio, and you, we may ask you to phone in if needed.
Okay. If you need me to phone in, just, I, I can see the chat, so if you enter into the chat that I need to go to phone, I can switch over to that. So with that, let's, please move the slide, and we'll start with the homeowner. All right. First and foremost, for wildland, or wildfire preparedness, is each and every individual within the city needs to take responsibility for their property in defending their home. We can do an awful lot of things as a community, but they will be for naught if we do not engage the community members individually and as property owners. Establish relationships, teach them how to defend their home and how to properly manage the vegetation and their home construction materials and whatnot, and their home. This has been played out over and over again throughout the western United States in wildfire. It is a large explanation for why one home can be left standing when a neighborhood is wiped out. Preparedness matters, and for this, we need to engage the public, which is, you as council is the best opportunity we have to reach the public is through the connections that all of you have throughout the community to engage people on this subject. Next slide, please. The next thing is going from the individual's responsibility into neighborhood wildfire preparedness planning. This is something that Eastside Fire Rescue does specifically. This is going into a neighborhood, I'll pick on the Highlands, for instance, and the Highlands is a neighborhood. This is Eastside Fire and Rescue figuring out and establishing an actual deployment plan and preparing that community, or if a fire were to start in several different areas of the community, we map out how we would respond, what, if anything, has happened in the past, utilizing weather patterns, how they change year to year, monitoring them. We do not have all the communities within Isiqua or all the communities within our service area prepared at this point with a, with a preparedness plan, but we look at the highest risk areas, and we, we put resources to work through a plan. These are very detailed plans that take months to develop. We scrutinize them at our command staff meetings and challenge each other's assumptions on what we'll open with fire and order to prepare. But this is something that's ongoing and will continue to happen as we take on higher fire areas within Isiqua. Next slide, please. Next, we get into community planning, and this is an initiative that we'll, we will be coming back to, not only the Isiqua city councils, but the other city councils that we serve, working on some of these initiatives. Code considerations, for instance, and I think I mentioned this before to you, something like banning shakshingle roofs or creating incentive programs to consider, to help individuals who have shakshingle roofs now to convert those to asphalt shingle is an example of some code and some programs that we've been doing on there. Urban forest management. Our forests do exist, and they are healthy, and there are ways to manage our forests. We're city-owned, for instance, or work with our partners at the county or the state or our community on how best to manage that forest while still taking in all of the environmental qualities that we have in the Pacific Northwest. Pay attention to the environment and properly manage the forest for a possible fire. Shelter in place locations, identifying where those sites are ahead of time before the emergency happens. Evacuation routes, something else we've talked about in the past. Oftentimes, in these fast-moving wildfire events, it is not the lack of preparedness in the community that gets the community in trouble from a fire perspective, it's the lack of preparedness around evacuation routes and how to evacuate and communicate that properly to the citizens within the community. That goes hand in hand with evacuation sites. And then from an EFOR standpoint, community planning, we can tie into our neighborhood preparedness planning. It's overall as a community, what are our tactical and strategic objectives when it comes to wildfire and setting up scenarios on a wildfire approaching from several different directions, which is not always the same scenario, but we can anticipate what some of those tactical and strategic objectives will be ahead of time. And then trigger points, and a trigger point is something referring to, okay, when a fire gets to North Bend, that may trigger evacuations in Isiqua. And that's an example of identifying trigger points for some of these issues around the community planning. And next slide, please.
Chief, this is Tisha. I'll advance the slide. Your audio's deteriorating a bit more, so I'm not sure how many slides you have left, but there may be value in taking a minute to phone in.
Okay. Tisha, this is my last slide.
Okay. Then we will bear, we will bear with you, and, and we can articulate, we can understand the majority of what you are saying.
Okay. So last.
Right. And, oh, Chief Clark, if I could break in.
Yes.
This is Councilmember DeMichelle. I, I think maybe we have some council members that have questions, and I'm having difficulty as well hearing and seeing them, so we've got some technical issues tonight. So when we get to the end of this slide, let's pause for a little bit and see if we can catch up on any possible questions, okay?
And thank you, and I'll do that, and I can also call in in that, in the interim there and see if that helps.
Okay. Thanks.
So my, my last slide is, is to, to assure the council and the citizens of Isiqua that you will find no better prepared fire department in King County for wildland. Eastside Fire Rescue for decades has been the leader in the region in wildland fire response throughout the western United States and in Washington specifically. We have more trained firefighters than most every other department combined when it comes to wildland specialties and the equipment that you have supported us on. And so we'll continue to do that, and we're the only fire department that has any firefighter training in wildland fire response. So we are doing everything we can from aid agreements, using our experience and recruitment, to get on top of fires quickly, knowing they're small, so they don't spread into the larger events. So with that, I'll end here, and I will try calling in so I can answer any questions. If there are questions still, again, I'll stay on, give me some time to call in. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Thank you, Chief Clark. And I understand we're having trouble tonight with the chat, and not every council member is able to put into the chat that they want to ask a question or they want to speak. So let's just do this the old-fashioned way. If you had a question or you wanted to speak, do you want to just hold up your hand and I'll call on you? All right. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. So when Chief Clark is back, I think it's, I don't know if it's a question for Chief Clark or a question for Bob York. I had always been under the impression that Isiqua was considered at risk for wildland urban interface fires. And I remember the old state fire chief told me we were the poster child for western Washington. But I, I looked at this, at the King County WUI map, and it didn't actually have Isiqua as a risk area. It had basically east part of Preston, Snoqualmie, unincorporated King County around Snoqualmie, unincorporated North Bend with a little bit of the city of North Bend.
Welcome to WAX. In your conference room or meeting number, followed by.
But we were not, we were not in that list, so, or we were not on that map. So I'm just curious if we are compared to the rest of, you know, western King County at, at higher risk.
If Chief Clark's back, I'll yield to him. Obviously, he, with North Bend as part of his service territory, he's well-cooked to toss how we sit in relation to some of the other cities that are around us, including Snoqualmie.
And I, and I ask the question, not, not unrelated, as a homeowner who sits adjacent to unincorporated King County and beyond that state park.
And King County, King County folks are also able to answer this question that are on standby waiting for their presentation, so. Chief Clark, are you back?
Well, I'm, I'm still on my computer. I'm trying to call in, and it's not taking my access code. I don't know if my quality's gotten any better. Did you hear that? Councilmember Martz has a question.
I can hear you fine, but I don't know about other people. Okay. Thumbs up, thumbs up, Chief Clark. Go ahead.
Okay. So we absolutely, in Isiqua, and I live here too, as you may know, we are absolutely at a significant risk for wildfire, according to the WUI maps that were published less than six months ago. I did share those with the board at EFOR, and we're absolutely at a significant risk as, as is North Bend and the eastern portion of Snoqualmie.
Can we get those WUI maps by any chance?
Absolutely. I can, I'll put them together and get them to you this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Chief Clark, you talked a little bit about evacuation routes being one of the difficult issues for communities when they do experience a fire. Can you talk a little bit about where we are in setting that up? It doesn't look like we have signs up in the community. How would we communicate out to the community in the case of need for evacuation, what those routes are?
So the actual evacuation routes is an emergency management function, and that emergency management function is with the City of Isiqua, so I'm not the right person to answer that. I'll defer to Bob. I'm not sure who, who's the right person.
This might be a rare opportunity for me to have Brenda talk, because I'm pretty sure she's, Brenda, you can come on and help me with that answer, since you've been doing this for a while longer than I have. Can you unmute yourself, Brenda?
I, can you hear me?
Yes.
So we have an evacuation plan. It's rather old. It was a plan put together by EFOR then, emergency management, and the police department. That's a, we have that in place. So that probably may need to be revisited with help from police department and the fire department. We need to review that.
Thank you. Can you talk about how we would communicate that out to the public in the case of an emergency? Is there a communications plan related to evacuation routes?
Maybe I'll yield to Autumn if she's, if she's in the meeting.
I don't think Autumn's present tonight, but Brenda, there's all sorts of capabilities that Isiqua has with radio and other communication interventions that I'm just learning myself. Harvey, you're on too. Do you have any?
And why don't you let me take this, Bob? It's Wally Bob, of course, the city administrator. I, I think as Bob was saying, we certainly do have social media, but clearly, we need to look at that plan again. I think signs make a lot of sense. And so a part of the purpose of this evening is to share with you what we have and to get some additional direction. get some additional direction from you. So we'll take as a first piece of additional direction to review that evacuation plan. And the next time we come back with an update, have more information for you.
Thank you, Wally.
Councilmember Walsh, did you have any further questions?
Not at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions before we move on to the next speaker? All right, I believe Laura is up next.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That's great, thank you. And I believe that Bob is running the slides. There we go. So it's very nice to meet you all. I'm Laura Whitley Bender. I'm the Climate Preparedness Program Manager for King County. So I work with King County agencies to prepare for the impacts of climate change, and I also work with our community partners in other King County communities to help support broader climate resilience objectives within the county. Jared Schneider from the Office of Emergency Management is here as well. Jared, do you want to take a moment to introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, folks. My name's Jared Schneider, and I am the Hazard Mitigation Program Manager for King County Emergency Management. So, you know, my duties entail mitigating through grants and otherwise hazards that we face here in King County. It's just nice to meet you all.
So Jared and I are working together with, along with King County communities and partners to develop a King County wildfire risk reduction strategy. And our goal tonight was to share with you what the vision is for that strategy and how we think it will help support improved or increased wildfire preparedness within the King County region. Bob, would you mind slide, next slide? So as Bob noted, this interest in developing a wildfire strategy is really stemming from a confluence of events over the last few years. Certainly, the wildfire smoke events in 2017, 2018, and 2020 has resulted in an increased level of awareness, heightened activity from where Jared sits, where I sit, and others. We noticed there are a lot of people were moving suddenly on wildfire preparedness, lots of conversations, lots of parallel efforts, and it was getting hard to track who was doing what and necessarily know what were the gaps that we had in that work. We also had major regional wildfires. The fires in eastern Washington, Oregon, and California were on our front page of our newspapers every day. And the, the tragic and compelling stories coming out of those regions were leading many people to wonder, could that happen here? Are we ready for that here? We had impactful local fires, that even the, the fire last summer, well, last September in Pierce County, it was a real eye-opener for many folks who have been talking about the need for wildfire preparedness. It was one of those things where, you know, we can look at what happens in eastern Washington, we can look at what happens in California, and recognize those forests are different. And western Washington forests are very different from our drier east side forests, from the California forests, and even some of our Washington, or Oregon forests. But, but Pierce County, right? You're not supposed to have a fire that burns for four days in Pierce County, and yet we did. So that really kind of started making it feel like that bullseye was moving in. And then lastly, as we've discussed a little bit, the new Department of Natural Resources Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI maps, I think that is one of the more entertaining acronyms in government speak, that are in the process of being released. They've been out for a little bit now. They haven't been officially signed off yet by DNR, but once they get signed off on by DNR, it will also result in some changes in building codes that start to speak to some of these wildfire preparedness needs. I'm going to show you that map now. Next slide. So Councilmember Martz, I think this might help address some of your questions, although it is very tiny on my screen. So I believe these slides may have been shared with you in advance or will be available to you, and you could look at that later. That arrow is actually pointing to Issaquah, as tiny as that is. And what you see with these new maps is a substantial expansion relative to the other maps of what is considered the wildland urban interface. And this has as much to do really with a change in the methodology and how this was mapped, as well as just the fact that we are a more developed county now relative to when those other maps were developed. What you see for Issaquah, you know, is a mix of what you could see if, if you had magnifying glasses, are a mix of, of reds and yellows. So a mix of what's known as medium or high interface areas and areas with low or very low intermix areas. So just for clarification, intermix areas are areas where houses and wildland directly interface. Interface areas are where structures are scattered throughout. So all that to say that there, there is a wildfire risk. There is a WUI within Issaquah, as well as many of our east King County communities. Next. The other thing that's motivating a lot of the interest right now in this wildfire strategy and general broader awareness around wildfire is the issue of climate change. So we do know that climate change, and particularly rising temperatures, affect the frequency, intensity, and orderation of extreme events. And particularly when it comes to wildfire, it's essentially loading the dice and creating conditions more favorable to wildfire. That doesn't mean that every summer we're going to get a big wildfire in western Washington. And, and, you know, historically, we don't get big wildfires, except when we do. We have what in our region is known as low-frequency, high-intensity fire return intervals. So whereas in eastern Washington, it's usually, in the absence of fire suppression, high-frequency, low-intensity on our side, low-frequency, high-intensity. The last big major fires in our region, huge fires, were the Yakult burn in western Washington, the southwest Washington, burned hundreds of thousands of acres in, in a matter of a few days. So they can, we do have the potential for very large and very quickly moving fires, but they are not very frequent. But what we do know is climate change is changing that calculus. So with hotter temperatures, drier conditions, it creates the conditions that are more favorable to that type of fire. We also know that today's choices shape our vulnerabilities going forward. So the, the actions we take or the actions that we don't take now will ultimately shape our vulnerability to that fire. And so in that sense, many of the activities that Issaquah is pursuing, not only do those have really strong near-term benefits in terms of addressing and reducing wildfire risk as we know it today, but they also produce benefits for addressing wildfire risk in a changing climate. Next slide. So just a, a quick primer on how climate change affects the potential for wildfire. There are several major components that really affect wildfire in the northwest and with that east, western Washington. So clearly, our, our summer temperatures are a major factor, as is, of course, those hotter spring temperatures. Summer, if you remember in 2015, we actually had quite a hot spring on top of a low snowpack year. So that's, that snowpack is an important factor as well. With lower snowpack or earlier snow melt, what you see is an earlier drying out of soil conditions, an earlier drying out of fuels. If we get precipitation in July and August, then that may help, but that's a big if. And the timing of our fall rains is a big variable. If we get a late return of the fall rains, that's extending that wildfire season and increasing the potential for fire. That Yakult burn that I mentioned earlier happened in September of 1902. Our fires this summer, the Pierce County fire was in September. The conductive activity is lightning, that's a big factor in eastern Washington, less of a factor in western Washington, but can be, can be certainly a cause for fires. And then just overall, that the dryness and the quantity of fuels in our forests, that dryness, of course, coming with hotter temperatures and drier conditions. A big factor for big fires in western Washington is the presence of east winds. So that can really make a difference between a fire being an acre or two or a fire moving up quickly in size. Next slide. So the, the decision or the action to develop a King County wildfire preparedness strategy is, sorry, wildfire risk reduction strategy, is really a shared objective across several major county planning elements. It is an action that is cross-listed within the recently updated King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's an action in our recently updated Strategic Climate Action Plan, and it is an action in our forthcoming 30-year Forest Plan. And that was intentional. We wanted to make sure that it was clear that these plans were talking to each other and recognize that each of these plans play a role in helping to support wildfire risk reduction. I also want to note before I hand it over to Jared that as I talk about wildfire risk reduction, this strategy does include wildfire smoke and paying attention to what we need to do to address wildfire smoke. That is certainly something that we have already experienced in recent years and clearly can originate from fires outside of the King County region. So it is important to recognize that even as we think about what we need to be doing to prepare for wildfire occurring within King County, we also need to be preparing for more frequent wildfire smoke events that are happening because other parts of the west are burning. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jared.
Great, thank you, Laura. If we could advance the next slide, thank you. All right, and so as you've seen on that previous slide, you know, this is a, this is an effort that is very connected to other planning efforts. And just as it's connected, it's also integrated, is what our strategy is intended to be with forest health, taking actions in the wildland urban interface, the WUI to risk our, or to reduce our risk, and then finally, the emergency response element. So one thing I really appreciate about Chief Clark's presentation was, you know, he, he comes from that response side, right? But if you noticed, a majority of the slides was about preparedness, right? And so that's exactly what our risk reduction strategy is looking to do. It's, it's taking a comprehensive look from the very top, forest health, you know, down to the WUIs, to the areas that are at risk, and then finally, that response element. And so what, what this strategy is, is, if we advance the slide, it is intended to have the outcomes where we have the, the investments for the future identified by the strategy. It's supposed to identify where we can leverage and amplify existing work. And lastly, areas of opportunity for future coordination work. And this high-level strategy is really just the beginning. Fall 2021 is our intended date in which we are hoping to roll this strategy out. We're currently in the process of going through interviews and talking to folks, you know, who have a touch and who have a part in this comprehensive risk reduction strategy. And if we advance the next slide... Oh, well, I thought I was going to talk about a parcel, but I apologize, but that's the following slide. But, you know, we're reaching out to fire communities, reaching out to cities like yourselves, you know, public health, Kids Sound Clean Air Agency, DNR. You know, we are trying to take this, this large-scale approach to this wildfire risk reduction strategy. And the benefits of this is, one, we can push as a county, as a community of communities, I think that's something I haven't highlighted enough, while it's a King County, you know, plan on the title, it really is for a community of communities. Because wildfire, they, they don't respect jurisdictional bounds, right? You know, if Issaquah's prepared, you know, that's great, but North Bend, King County, everyone needs to be prepared, right? This is, this is a regional effort, and that's our intention. So the benefits of a plan like this is we can identify recommended practices for all of our partners hopefully to take, and create partnership and coordination of activities across jurisdictions, just like I said, it takes integration to really make this work. Find, share, seek resources. That's something we've been hearing a lot from these interviews, is that, you know, people just want to know what one another are doing. They want to share best practices, and they want to speak with one voice, you know, as a county. We also want to facilitate incorporation of wildfire priorities into work plans, strategic plans, and land use planning and zoning, right? Like, as Laura pointed out, this is becoming a, it's becoming a reality in our area, and it already is a reality. So we want to make sure that this isn't something where we wait to have a big event, you know, a big paradise event in King County to say, oh, maybe we should start taking wildfires seriously. We, we want to start working in now to the way that we run our governments. And then lastly, we want to provide foundation for grant applications and strategically-aligned resources, right? So there is, you know, federal dollars, state dollars out there where we can support mitigation actions and, you know, other pots of money to where we can actually reduce our risk. So that's something, those are the major benefits of this plan. If we could move to the next slide, please. And, you know, as I mentioned, there's a lot of partners helping in the development of this plan. You know, we have King County Fire Districts and Zones. We've talked to EFOR already. I've talked to, you know, Bob, Harvey, Brenda, we've had an interview, you know, really trying to figure out where the concern is, what would be valuable in the strategy. And we're trying to take this, like I said, broad approach, right? So we talk to cities, fire zones, private utilities, we've talked to PSE, SVU, SCL, other King County departments, Seattle King County Public Health, Kids Sound Clean Air Agency, we have an interview with them on Thursday, King Conservation District, you know, who does a lot of the firewise type activities and consultations with private landowners, WSU Extension, again, they have that similar capability, our tribal partners, and again, DNR. So that's who we're reaching out to. So next slide. And so we just want to give you guys a sneak peek of what we're hearing already from these interview processes. Like I said, fall 2021 is really when we're thinking that we'll have the strategy in a shareable format with distilled information from these broad interviews. But the main touchpoints that we're hearing already is, one, we need broader public awareness of wildfire risk. That's something that we almost hear across every interview from every facet of government. We need public information that's tailored to western Washington. Laura touched on this, most of the firewise information is intended for dry forests, you know, forests that don't necessarily resemble our own western Washington forest, because, again, you know, keeping our own forest green too is, is another priority, right? We need more community scale wildfire mitigation and planning, more support firewise and other landowner assistance, changes in building and zoning cones, we talked about the shake roofs already, evacuation planning, you know, ingress and egress, evacuation routes from, you know, communities like Swak Mountain and Talus, right? These are communities that are in that WUI that have limited ingress and egress. So we need to have a plan effort about that, you know, we heard the chief speak on that and, you know, council members as well. Additional wildfire, fire response training, you know, EFOR, they have an incredible training program, but as the chief pointed out, EFOR really is the gold standard within the county. You know, there's plenty of other fire departments that share mutual aid agreements, you know, that may not have the same level of training, so we've heard that concern as well. We need more information on managing wildfire smoke, touch on, and then shared resources for planning, so shared risk maps and best practices with one another. So that's what we're hearing so far. Like I said, you know, we, we're going to continue these interviews, and we're going to hear more, and, you know, y'all will be seeing a more distilled version. We'd be happy to come back and speak to you once we, you know, have, have these best practices and ideas about the strategy really distilled. But I think if, now's the appropriate time, we would love to hear questions from anyone.
Thank you so much. Do, I think we can use the chat now. Do any councilmembers have questions? I am not seeing any questions. Oh, all right, Councilmember Martz.
Yeah, the system doesn't seem to be letting me enter chat text. It'll let me type it, but it won't let me enter it, so that's unfortunate. So my question is, oh, there, now it's working, okay. My, my question is, my understanding is that wildland fires in western Washington are primarily, when they, when they talk about how they start, in eastern Washington, it's lightning, but in western Washington, it's house fires, is what I seem to recall. So my question is, does, as part of county efforts or as part of EFOR, is there anything to do more rapid response? Because my understanding is the house fires burn hot and they get into the canopy, and then once they're into the canopy, it's, it's real bad from there. So when you talk about the unique stuff to the western Washington, obviously, it's a different, it's a different fuel load than it is in eastern Washington, but is this thing about house fires being a bigger risk for wildfires true? And if so, are there things that, that we can support with our fire districts that will, that will help respond to that?
This is Chief, Chief Clark. I'd be happy to take a stab at that. So a couple, but house fires are, are a legitimate risk to the wildland interface. And in the last several years, we've had many in the outline areas. The closest one to Issaquah I can recall was in Merrimont that did get up into the trees. And we routinely pre-deploy or deploy our resources on dry days for fires above the fire if, if it does come in. When we know and we're watching the weather during wildland season, we do try to stand up, brush trucks with extra staffing in order to get ahead, because you do have to get on these small. But I'll tell you what's growing of more concern even in what happened in Pierce County is windy days and power lines that are above ground. Actually, we had hundreds of fire starts throughout the region on one day with wind and power lines. And the other significant threat that we have in our service area, and we have pre-planned for the Highlands, is a car fire on the side of the road at 90. Car fires are very, do start lots of fires throughout the western United States and in Washington, and just even simple things like sparks. And unfortunately, still, cigarettes out the window still occur.
All right. Is there, are, when you talk about above-ground electrical lines, are there... are there things at the county or municipal level that can be done with the utilities to accelerate the transition to below ground power to reduce the, the fire risk?
Yeah, we've talked to some of the utilities, they, they're actually taking wildfire, you know, they've seen from PG&E, you know, down in California, and, you know, some of the actions that they've had to deal with, you know, as a consequence of power lines or fires. And they are already taking efforts to harden their power lines. They're looking at a couple of mitigation strategies and ways that, you know, they can reduce the risk. I don't think burying the lines was actually one that they did mention. I don't want to speak, you know, too much on behalf of them. But what I, but what we have understood from our interviews with them is it's, it's on their radar. They're taking the actions already, but I understand too your point for accelerating. And we, we can push to in our channels to see if there's ways that we can maybe accelerate that process. Laura, just an add.
Yeah, I'll just note that burying power lines is incredibly expensive. And so it is something that's being discussed in California. I, I, I think there's a question of whether that would be the appropriate, the, the appropriate near term response, I think, based on what we know at this point in time. Right now, a lot of the efforts are on ensuring, you know, maintenance of those power lines. That was a big problem in California. Those, those lines just weren't being maintained. But also looking at vegetation management. And both not only in the right of way that the utilities have ownership of, but also trying to work with property owners for those hazard trees that are just on the outside of that right of way. But because they're tall trees, if they go down, they have the potential to fall into those power lines. But yes, it is a very active area of conversation within the utility industry right now. And we will be working with utilities to have actions in the strategy.
I, I hadn't been thinking the big high voltage, super tall power lines. I've been thinking more where there's, you know, house, I mean, I don't know where, where these are. But I mean, I assume there are some areas around King County that have, you know, house height, you know, municipal power coming in to houses and whether those start fires or not. I, I mean, I don't know, but those are the ones that seem like they'd be cost efficient to convert to below ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy, Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. This is Chris Ray. I want to talk just briefly about the, what was it called? It was the home ignition zone. And what are we doing or what have we done or what do we plan to do to get word out about this? Because it seems like that's the best way to defend people's houses. And is there, are there any programs to help people to do that if they are so inclined? And I was thinking about the grants that Jared obliquely alluded to, and if there was any opportunity for grant funding for doing something like pushing an initiative around that.
Yeah, you know, so in full, in full disclosure, it's actually something that I'm still learning about myself, you know, and, and really trying to understand what type of resources are out there. There is, you know, like I said, hazard mitigation grants, there's a fire management assistance grants. Frankly, I don't think we've really tapped in as a region into those grants before. So it's a little bit of uncharted territory. So to answer your question, I, I'm not entirely sure what they could all entail or the requirements. But I would happy, I'd be happy to do some research and, you know, share it back to Bob, or you can share it to you or come back and speak about it.
That would be awesome. Thanks, Jared.
Okay. Did you get your question answered? And any more questions? No? Okay. Councilmember Walsh, I'm just going to check and see if we have any other questions or public comments before I start taking council comments, if that's all right with you. Okay. Clerk, did we, do, did anybody come online to make a public comment?
No, we still don't have anyone from the public on the line with us tonight.
All right. And I don't believe we received any email comments either. All right. So Councilmember Walsh, let's start with comments then.
Yeah, so I think you're absolutely right that this is something that is on people's minds much more because of the wildfire smoke, much more because of the risks that we've seen on the West Coast. And I think it behooves us to take it seriously. I also think we have an interesting point where we've got a community that's very interested in giving back, very interested in connecting with others in the middle of pandemic. And what better way to do that than to be outside and be able to do something? And so being able to organize community wide days or neighborhood wide days where we're encouraging people to get out and clear around their properties, sounds like a wonderful way this spring and summer to engage our community while also listening to the advice of many of the experts that we've said. And so I would be interested in seeing if that's something that we can do. I think it presents an opportunity that our community would rise to the occasion for and give us something that we feel like we can do in the middle of a very difficult time.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I believe the administration is asking if they are on the right track with this plan and if there's anything we think should be added or that they've forgotten. So are there any additional comments? City Administrator Bob Kowitz, do you have what you need or would you like additional thoughts?
Councilor De Michelle, I think Council, Deputy Council President Ray has a comment.
Ah, sorry about that. I've got to watch, watch the hands. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, both Councilmember De Michelle and City Administrator Bob Kowitz. Chris Ray, question or a comment around, I think we are doing the right thing. I think we are on the right track. I would like to see us do more around community outreach and communications. And I think we do need to get some answers about the, the the question that Councilmember Walsh brought up earlier, which is, what's, what does evacuation look like? Because thinking back to Paradise, it was, it wasn't Paradise. So, you know, I think, and there are some neighborhoods. I live in Talus, so I'm particularly squeamish about that. So I think there's some work to do around both communications and evacuation planning.
Thank you. Any further comments?
And Councilmember De Michelle, if I can just add, first of all, thank you to our presenters, thank you to the council. This is an important issue. I think it's important for us as your city staff, working with our partners to kind of refresh our plans. And I think the, the council, Deputy Council President, Councilmember Walsh, you know, hit on some of those. But I also think it's that community organizing. We have a longstanding CERT program. I think we need to leverage that as well. When we look at disasters and emergency preparedness sort of writ large for the community, of course, this is only one. You know, we, we also have flooding, we also have earthquakes, we also have other bad weather issues. And I think we need to continue to leverage the resources of our community members as we deal with this as well. So I appreciate the feedback. We will continue to work on this. Come back to you appropriately with updates, but I appreciate the time you spent tonight on the subject.
Wonderful. Councilmember Marsh, did I see your hand up? No, sorry. I will just add my two cents, and that is that I agree with everyone who was talking about increased community awareness. And I think that a lot of people are not aware that there is even a danger. And, but it clearly has been identified already through public outreach, but I just want to underline that. Otherwise, I think, I think that the plan itself is very thorough. And, and I think that it should proceed. So. City Administrator Bob Kowitz, do you have everything you need then?
Yes, we do. Thank you again.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ID 0814, Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan Update. And this is being presented by Gene Paul, our management analyst.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gene Paul. I'm the management analyst in the executive office. I'll be beginning the presentation tonight on the Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan. But I'll also be joined by Stephanie Johnson, the Human Resources Director, and Monica Negrillo, the Human Services Manager. And then later in the evening, Police Chief Scott Beerbaum will also have some presentations regarding the action plan. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the council an update on the action plan and then provide the context for those four separate presentations later this evening, where the administration will be seeking city council feedback. As background, the action plan was drafted in the summer of 2020 in response to input from the city council and the community. The city council endorsed the final version of the action plan on August 10, and the administration provided the first update on the plan at the November 2 city council meeting. Tonight's update is the second update on the action plan. Here's the high level summary of both the historical and current status for each action, oh, correction, each item on the action plan. At the November update, nine actions were classified as on track. Two actions had missed their initial deadlines and were considered minor challenges. And the administration had scheduled to work on seven items to begin in 2021. Finally, two actions at that point were complete. Currently, 14 actions are progressing well and considered on track. Only two items remain scheduled for future start dates, and four actions are now considered complete. The entire update with a brief narrative for each action is included in tonight's packet. But rather than go over every action, the administration really wanted to focus on the significant changes since the last update and set the stage for the four distinct conversations tonight. We'll do that by focusing on the three different themes of police accountability, equity, and human services. For police accountability actions, there are three significant influences on the items in the action plan. The first is the state legislative session that is currently ongoing and scheduled to end on April 25. Actions on the city's plan that could be impacted by new legislation include the discipline and termination of police officers, training program requirements, and a community review board. Chief Scott Beerbaum will discuss proposals in the state legislature, legislature in his police department budget and operations update that follows this presentation. The second influence on the police accountability actions is the expiration of the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding with the Issaquah School District. This topic will also be covered in greater detail in Chief Beerbaum's second presentation tonight. Finally, the potential creation of a community equity commission would provide a venue for inputs on actions in the police accountability plan regarding community complaints, data collection, and data reporting. Equity actions are the next component of the action plan. And Stephanie Johnson, Human Resources Director, is going to provide the update on city staff training and the racial equity framework.
Thank you, Gene. Good evening, council. Boy, I get the pleasure of talking about the good work that our internal equity team has been doing over, you know, a handful of months that started in 2020. We met as a team in January and did a retreat to focus our, you know, work plan items for 2021 on a couple of different deliverables that I want to talk to you about tonight. The first item is our citywide equity training for city staff. We are working on two different training components to date. The first item that we have purchased is an OnWare software training tool. We purchased the software in late 2020, following our last update with the council in November. We had managers and supervisors review this online training, piloted in December and January, and we just introduced it organizationally February 1st to all staff. The rollout of this Trilliant software introduces the organization to three different trainings as some foundational training, similar to training that the council did in August of last year. The first module that we introduced to staff this month is on unconscious bias. In March, we will introduce workplace diversity, inclusion, and sensitivity, followed in April by microaggressions in the workplace. You know, we're at February 23rd today. I did a quick update today with staff on some report out that this software gives us. We have about 75% of our staff completing already the unconscious bias training in February. While staff is going through those three training modules over the next months, we're also working on our larger training package with a consultant that we've just identified in the last, in the last weeks, we're putting pin to paper on contract for that. This larger training will, you know, focus on foundational understanding of equity, in particular racial equity. You know, we, we hope to do larger cohort training. But, you know, the, the original work of, or excuse me, not the original work, but the, the work that we're doing with the modules will give a nice introduction to be prepared as we build the larger citywide equity training. The other item that the equity team is working on or would like to begin work on for 2021 is building out what our racial equity framework looks like. You know, often this is referred to as a toolkit, an equity lens, a framework. We are going to be building this to bring back to the council in, in future sessions to talk about how we build a framework as we look at policies, procedures, the work we do organizationally so that we can do that work through an equity lens. So these are the two big items that the equity team is working on. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we continue, you know, just looking at our recruitment processes with an equity lens and building, you know, that out as well. Later in the agenda tonight, I'll be presenting what we're looking at next for city council equity training. And I don't know if we're pausing in between for questions or moving on to the end, so I guess I'll pause there and ask that.
Thank you so much. Are there any council members who would like to ask questions or comment on the presentation? And I can't see all of you, so you'll have to put it in the chat. I am not seeing any. I know that we've got a delay on the chats. I'm just waiting a little bit longer than usual to see if anybody gets, gets it in there. You know, I'm not seeing anybody. And so I guess that we will move on. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll hand it back over to Gene or whom next is on our presenter list. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Human services is the third theme of the action plan. And tonight, Human Services Manager Monica Negrillo is going to provide an update.
Okay, Gene. Good evening, council members. This is Monica Negrillo in Human Services. Tonight, for you, we have three brief human services updates. Staffing related updates, an update on the Human Services Commission, equity work, and an update on the community court thing. The first two items we will focus on in a, in a more specific presentation in just a few minutes. And so for now, I'm going to focus on providing you with an update on the community court planning. Also with us tonight is Kristi Shorn, our Issaquah Court Administrator. So she's going to be available for questions. So next slide, please, Gene. Thank you. So the Issaquah Municipal Court is currently working on starting a community court as an alternative model to the traditional court system. And why is that? It's because there's growing research and evidence that the traditional model is not working for everyone. So the community court comes as a resource for the current criminal justice system in helping address low level crimes and really help address some of the inequities that we've seen historically in the criminal justice system, especially with members of the community who may not respond well to the, to the traditional models. So the community court provides an opportunity to create a problem solving approach to local crime and safety concerns. And it provides a wraparound service model where participants are and safety concerns, and it provides a wraparound service model where participants are enrolled in a variety of services depending on their service needs and their unique circumstances that range from treatment to community service to employment or education. So, the community court provides an opportunity to treat the actual problems and not just the symptoms. The community court also provides for an opportunity to implement a person-centered approach or to get to know the individual and not just the defendant, as in the traditional models. And as mentioned, yes, hopefully it will stop the revolving door of the criminal justice system where the same participants come back into the system multiple times. Next slide, please. So, the intent of the community court is really to reduce recidivism, to reduce use of jail, especially for low-income offenses, and ultimately to really improve public trust in the justice system and create a safer community. Next slide, please. So, in terms of a few updates on where the court is currently with the, in the planning process for the community court, to date, the team, the court team, has been identified for the project, including service providers. Also, the court has identified a consultant who could help really set up the details and oversee the process to really begin the community court. We visited and learned from other jurisdictions, and the court is also looking for ways to coordinate and create efficiencies with other jurisdictions in our region. The role of the Human Services Division in the community court really lies in providing support and resources for the Community Resource Center, which is the part of the court that provides support services and resources for participants. So, specifically, our division will help identify and coordinate those service providers. The launch, the estimated tentative launch date, launch date is July 1. And I think that concludes my brief presentation. And again, Kristi Shorn is also available for questions.
Thank you, Monica. I do see that Councilmember Mart has a question for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. So, I was looking at the Issaquah Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan. This isn't part of that, is it?
Yes, you are correct. This was not identified initially on the action plan. However, it's part of the entire process of focusing more on support services and human services-related activities that can help address the inequities in our system. So, we included it later as part of the bigger, larger system change that we are trying to.
Was this presented to the council? Can you remind me when we approved this?
The action plan?
No, this community court.
No, I don't think that this is, I think this might be the second time that council hears a little bit about this, but I don't think it came yet to council for approval.
So, is it, it's, I mean, it's being presented like it's moving forward, but I don't think council's made a decision on it. So, that's what's got me confused.
Right. Thank you. I think that is a great point, and I'm gonna find someone for help because I don't know if I was involved in all the process and kind of like to see what the mechanism is for approval. City Administrator Bob Kowits, do you have additional insight into this?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Mart, members of the council. This is an initiative the court's been working on, really that kind of predates the police accountability action plan. We wanted to give you an update with this. We think it's certainly consistent with the work that the court has been doing over time and what we've been doing as a city. We certainly can bring back additional information to the council. We wanted tonight to make sure that the council is aware that this is going on, and if other council members are, would have additional questions, we can certainly bring this back for further discussion.
Well, is it, is it being budgeted within the purview of the mayor's ability to fund small projects? It seems like, it seems like a public policy issue that would normally come before council before work would progress on it.
Again, this is, it is something, it looks for additional, I think it's under $10,000 that will be needed to move forward with this initiative. Again, this is something that grew from the court staff, and I think the administration's perspective is this is very consistent with the work that we've already been doing. If the council feels that additional discussions require, then we can, I'll certainly speak with the mayor, and we'll see what we need to do to put it on our future agenda.
I mean, I would be interested to know, it sounds like it's a diversion from the traditional court. I'd be interested in knowing what kind of cases would qualify and the expected volume that's anticipated and the different sort of restorative justice model that would be employed and those sorts of, those sorts of questions. I think that community right now is concerned about perhaps an uptick in property crime, and so with that lens, I'd like to know more. I don't know how my fellow council members feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy, Deputy Council President Ray has the next comment.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. This is Chris Ray. I, I don't know that I would be opposed to the modification to the court system, but it does seem to be, to be a big public policy departure and would like to have some discussion and debate. So I think I'm, I'm kind of aligned with Councilmember Mart's on this that, that, you know, maybe a great idea, but can we kind of get some, some public transparency and learn more about this so we can make a good, informed public policy decision?
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, I would, I, I think that it would be helpful to know what actually is within the purview of the court because I know that there are certain things that they are able to do, changes that they're able to make. So, I would just, I don't have that framing right now. I think this has been presented twice to us as informational. So, if, for that subsequent conversation, if we could have some information about what actually the policy question would be that, that is within the purview of council, I think that would be helpful because I do know that there are certain administrative, certain logistical, those sorts of things that are squarely within the court's ability to make changes.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
Councilmember De Michele, members of the council, I know Kristi Shorn is on the call this evening. Kristi, I don't know if you want to add anything, or we can just perhaps bring this back as an informational item at a future city council meeting and have the judge here as well to speak to it.
Correct. We can bring the judge back, and thank you, council members, for listening tonight. I can answer a few of the quick questions. What we will be looking at is all nonviolent, low-level offenses. So, it'll be things like theft, third, disorderly conduct, charges like that, where we see that people won't reoffend if they are provided services. About a third of our cases qualify as low-level offenses, which is about 500 to 600 cases a year. Usually, in most programs, only about 75 participants participate in any given year in the program. But we can bring all that back.
Thank you. That actually was my question. You answered my question, so thank you for that. And I think it would be good for us to have more information. Generally, I support this approach because I'm just aware of many, like you say, low-level offenders who could use an alternative approach and would probably have a better outcome through that. But I think it would be good for us to have more information. Do any of my other council members have questions or concerns? I see Councilmember Goodman would like to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I have two questions. First, could we find out when this was presented before? What meeting? And second of all, a question for Kristi. Kristi, is this more of a deferral? So, if it's not, there's not a charge if there, unless there's a reoffend if you follow through with the program, which it would be different than just no charges at all, which is what has been in the news lately for low misdemeanors, for example, that Seattle had talked about? Could you speak to that? If, if you know, could you speak to that just one moment?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember. The charge is filed with the prosecutor's office, and the prosecutor's office will file the charges with the court. The participant, we're getting away from defendant, the participant would then enter into a stipulated order of continuance, which is very similar to a, to a deferral. And usually, it's for a year period of time. And at the end of that year, if they comply with the program, and they do have to attend weekly hearings to meet with providers. At the end, if they graduate the program, the case is dismissed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are we having comments as well, Councilmember De Michele, or are we waiting until all questions are out?
I think we've had a mixture, so please go ahead.
Okay, great. I think that, if this is coming back, I think the information that I would like to go along with this is also how it is that we anticipate being able to match people to services to, and ensure that we have services available, and that, when I say available, the participant, I guess we're not going to use defendant just to be respectful, participant also needs to have access to those services, which means sometimes they, there's a cost associated with them. So, I just think having a more thorough conversation about how that works would be helpful. That's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Council, Councilmember Goodman. I see Councilmember Walsh would like to make a comment next.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I do remember this conversation earlier, rather the presentation of the information from the court system. I was very impressed with it at that point. I think the questions that the council members have brought up are good questions. I'd love to hear them answered. I think if anything, I'm going to be pushing for us to do more when we come to that policy conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? City Clerk, has anyone come online to make a comment on this item?
Councilmember De Michele, let me do a quick look here to see if we have any members of the public. I also am unsure if we've reached the conclusion of this portion of the presentation on this item.
There's really just one more slide.
Okay.
Just why don't you just go ahead with the last slide, Councilmember De Michele, then we'll, we'll be done with this, with this item.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
So, really, just in terms of timing and next steps to wrap this up, the four presentations we've already mentioned are up next on tonight's agenda. And then just looking a little long-term, the administration's planning for the next update on the entire action plan at the May 11 city, city council study session. So, that, that concludes our first presentation, and we're available if there are any more questions or comments before moving on.
Are there any more questions or comments? And I see that no members of the public are on the call at this time. So, I think that we will move on to the next item. Thank you so much for the presentation. See, the next item is ID 0844, Police Department Budget and Operations, and this will be presented by Police Chief Beerbaum.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. I'll start sharing my screen for the presentation. Making sure I have the correct one here that I pulled up. If you can tell me, are you seeing the police operations and budget fully?
Yes, we can also see your next slide that's coming up, so...
All right. Well, then I apologize. Yes.
This is Tisha. If you go to display settings at the top of your screen in the PowerPoint, on your notes page, there we go. Okay, got it. You're good.
Okay, so you have the full presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So, tonight's conversation, did I lose you now?
Now you're fine.
All right, I apologize. Do we see the purpose of tonight's presentation? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Today is the opportunity to provide just an update on our operations and budget. Last year, when we last had a conversation about the police accountability plan, we had committed to coming back, obviously, each quarter. One of the aspects, as we were in the budget process, while we were in the process of developing this plan, we committed to looking at several aspects of the police operations. One, we talked about, obviously, positions within the organization. Two, we also then talked about several of the aspects of equipment and then policies related to discipline, training, hiring, et cetera. Overall, tonight, at the end of tonight's, one of the asks from the council is to really obtain direction from city council on our body camera project or potential for body camera project in the 2022 budget. Continue on. We're going to continue on into the operations and just confirming that you can see our staffing levels that we have for the current 2021 police department. During the 2021 budget process, we were authorized 36 sworn staff, 12 corrections staff, 12 dispatch staff, three and a half record staff, and then two administrative staff. Currently, we are, one of our main focuses is truly the hiring and then retention of our staff within the organization to provide that quality of service for the city, that that is really one of our focuses in this first quarter. We have been spending a significant amount of time on recruitment for all positions, and with partnering with Human Resources, we're continuing to work on developing more or additional staff to consider for positions within our organization. I would like to highlight on our sworn staff, we did lose a few officers at the beginning of the year who had left to other organizations, and we have brought in one additional. We do have a few officers that are currently in the background process, and we're hoping to be able to bring them on board sooner than later. And additionally, we're continually keeping an eye on the potential for individuals retiring or, or again, leaving to other organizations. So, really, the first focus of the first quarter of 2021 is that hiring of staff to get our staffing levels up to a good level. As one of the budget positions that we discussed during the budget process, and Monica had spoke about as well, is the behavioral health coordinator recruitment. We're currently in that process. We're partnering with the Human Services Department to, to bring on our next position for that embedded mental health coordinator, to really work with our law enforcement officers in response to those in crisis, to working with people in mental health, but also then also follow up with some of the case management and hopefully some of those wraparound services. We're in the process of setting up interviews, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, and with the intent of bringing that individual on in, hopefully in April. Of course, then, we're going to be really working hard to develop that partnership and introduce that individual into the organization and into the community and getting them connected with all of our local resources as well. I think that's going to be a good addition and a good supplement to our response to some of these, the issues that we are seeing regarding mental health and crisis within our community. As mentioned earlier, some of, one of another influence that we are really keeping a close eye on is the current legislative session. Obviously, it is concluding at the end of April, and there are several bills within the legislative session that are going to or could potentially impact police operations. the legislative session that are going to or could potentially impact police operations. We're monitoring them and as they, once the legislative session is done, we'll of course review those. Several of those directly overlay our police accountability plan, action plan, such as oversight, our use of force, training, qualified immunity, complaints, independent investigations. Those are all aspects that we that we're evaluating over this next long term plan in the police accountability plan. Oversight is one that could impact the city on a budgetary function. Currently, that bill is being evaluated to for a city to fund an oversight board at a reasonable level. So we're keeping a close eye on that one as well. I know there's a lot of work within our community and Human Services is going to talk a little bit more about the Community Equity Commission a little bit later. But I think that there is an opportunity for us, the work that we're doing currently, that may blend into that same oversight conversation. Training is another one that is focusing on de-escalation, crisis intervention tactics as well for law enforcement. And as we get to the end of legislative session and we see what the final resolution of all these competing proposals are regarding police reform, then we'll have a better idea of what we need to be bringing forward possibly for the 2022 budget. At that point, once we have a chance to evaluate that and see what are the changes that are need going to be occurring internally and what is the timeline of expectation of implementation? Another one of the bills that towards the bottom of the slide, the independent investigations, I know that it's already been proposed to council and presented to council about our independent force investigation team that has, you know, has already been approved. We're going to continue to utilize that on the in the greater King County area in case there is some sort of a lethal use of force within law enforcement that we will participate. The establishment of the independent investigation at the state level could impact that as well. So again, we're just keeping a close eye and some of our action plans or police accountability action plan, action items, we're pressing pause on now until there is resolution at the legislative level. Because if there is some things that are mandated by the state, we don't want to undo some of the aspects that potentially could be brought forward through this legislative session. Interestingly enough, one of the cutoff dates was this last Monday and the duty to intervene was was dropped from that the list and as well as officer wellness. Those are two aspects that have not moved forward within legislative session. Just because something hasn't moved forward in a legislative session doesn't mean that it can't be resurrected later in the in the process due to some last minute agreements or some decisions or some modifications to current bills that are in process. How that relates to, and again, just kind of want to follow up the influences on our police accountability, I'll talk about the bottom three first and then I would like to, we're going to talk a little bit more in depth about body cameras because that's really truly the the main direction that we're looking for moving forward. But discipline and termination, that is one of our action steps, training programs and community oversight or community board. Again, those are all just being evaluated in legislative session and we hope to have a little bit more guidance in late April on those. And we will provide that a better update in May when we come back for the next next update on the action plan. Now, the next the next aspect of it, though, that we, again, we had a brief discussion last year during, as we led the budget process, is the current overlay for body cameras. As discussed last year, we did not present it in the budget process. Currently, we do not necessarily have a plan for implementation in 2021 nor a firm direction towards providing information in the 2022 budget regarding body cameras. I would like to introduce one of our newest commanders, Commander Lauren Truscott. She joined us about a month ago and she has had experience with implementation of body camera programs and she can provide a little bit more details about body cams. And again, we only did like an initial review of the programs and did not do a in-depth process into it because we wanted to have this conversation with council. Commander Truscott?
Thank you. As the chief said, I come from, I joined in January and I come with one year.
Lauren, this is Tisha. We're having some trouble hearing you. You're kind of going in and out and your voice is very faint.
Okay, perhaps I can speed up. Is that better?
It's a it's a little bit better.
Okay, let me check my settings. I know I'm talking with the other.
As Commander Truscott is, you know, trying to get her audio back, I'll briefly talk about our body camera program. In the ID, we had provided information to council related to body cameras. First and foremost, body cameras are truly implemented within an organization for transparency and accountability within an organization. Agencies across the state or across the country have implemented them to provide kind of a unbiased view of interactions that police have with community members. The intent of the body cameras, and then again, is to record those interactions and they could be used obviously in case investigations. They could be also utilized in any sort of complaints about police actions. And it's truly, it provides just a an insight into those interactions. Commander Truscott, how are you doing so far?
Chief, why don't you keep going?
Yeah, okay. Okay. We'll keep going here on this. Overall costs, and again, from the initial just brief overview of the commander of the camera programs, we're looking at an initial and ongoing cost of a little over $250,000 to $275,000 per year. This is based on a couple of factors, on, of course, the FTEs to manage the data and to manage the public records and redaction of the videos. And then, of course, there is a ongoing cost for the equipment and the data storage as well as software that helps support the data redaction. We've we estimated around two to two and a half FTEs to manage those programs. And really what we've, as part of the conversation of where the workload lands, the reason why we're at that two to two and a half FTEs is we're really trying to take the work out of the officer's hands to free them up to really to address some of the community issues that we have and to utilize some of the civilian staff to manage that data on an ongoing basis. So again, it's usually it's based off of around $50,000 to $75,000 is for the equipment or the cameras, the data storage and some of the software. Also included in some of the costs to consider on that is associated with maybe costs associated with court or with prosecution for managing that new type of of data as well. And then again, it's just mostly the ongoing costs for FTE. Of course, there's ongoing training issues as well. Some of the aspects that we have regarding the body cameras and for considerations for timing truly kind of relate back to the community board and this community equity commission. We see that this is a public conversation with body cameras and the implementation and the use is something that's really important to involve those of the community or the community equity commission. And we recognize that there, although that is being formed, we see that as an opportunity to connect with our community stakeholders in that development and implementation as well. Commander Truscott, if you want, you can come over here and to my office and to follow up on this. I will I will pause as we're trying to manage through technical difficulties. And if there's any questions, then we will, I will gladly start to try and field those.
All right, do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Mart. Oh, whoops, I am very, very sorry. Councilmember Walsh and then Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I just got in there just second before you. Um, so, oh, good, we've got somebody else coming in, joining, fantastic. So I know that public records is one of those areas that we consistently see quite a bit of cost from and that is something that we have to respond to. And so I'm wondering how, if you were to try and kind of talk about the scale of this problem for redacting videos and responding to public records requests for body cameras versus the other things that we're mandated to do on a regular basis, both in police and perhaps, I don't know if the information could be related to the other things that we do on the city level, I'm just trying to get a sense of scale for this type of a program versus what we already do.
Sure. Can you guys hear me now? Okay, thank you. My apologies for that. I don't know what happened. So in relation or in regards to redaction time and effort put into it, if we get a request for a report, public disclosure request, a records employee will get that request, redact the necessary information on the report with, you know, time and effort goes into it. As opposed to a video request, it could be a video that could be five minutes or five hours. Somebody, the employee, a records employee, has to go by those video, go through those videos frame by frame and readact every identifying feature, facial features, addresses, phone numbers, driver's license, license plates. And so based on a 2017 study done by one of the records supervisors at my former agency, it takes about 10 minutes for an employee to redact one minute of body worn camera video and to make it available for public disclosure requests or for discovery in court. Does that answer your question?
I think that gives me a sense of what what it would take for videos, but I'm still having a hard time relating that to what we already do. So getting a sense of, is this two times as much, five times as much, et cetera?
Sure, I'll jump in on this one as well. It would be, it depends. Depends on how we set our policies moving forward on what is recorded, what the retention is on the recordings. So a lot of agencies turn on cameras from the beginning of the shift till the end of the shift. Our officers work a 12 hour shift. They're going to come into contact with people just by happenstance, just if somebody walking down the street versus a traffic stop or investigating a case, a case. As a result, the what agencies have seen is, I'll just say a comparison, a case report for regarding a domestic violence incident at a residence. We will remove names, dates of birth, addresses of those involved. And that is pretty quick. You can scan through the case report, utilize our programming to to remove it. And we're talking about a handful of, you know, maybe 10 minutes if there if it's a very basic type of case report, depending upon who asks for the information as well. Because if a defense attorney is asking for it, then that will be a different version as opposed to just a public individual asking about, you know, an incident involving a residence. As a video, that of course, then we're talking about all of the time led up to, again, the frame by frame. So we're talking about a maybe a 10 minute difference versus if it has domestic violence, you're going to have multiple officers that respond. So you're going to have multiple cameras, three, possibly three or four cameras involved with the video and audio from the time that they are en route, when they maybe receive like the audio, the dispatch through the whole case investigation plus like the witnesses. The time that's on scene for an officer for domestic violence could be anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour and a half. So the scale of the difference from one incident of just getting the case report to that video is significant. I mean, you know, I would say, you know, easily 10 times, you know, like the amount of time spent on a video for that and as opposed to just the case report where you're just, you know, you're redacting names and identifying information from a typed document versus the video. What we expect is, again, depends upon the policy that we put in place for retention of those types of things. But all cases, criminal cases, then of course, those are going to be saved and then the requests, they will come in for those as well.
Okay, thank you.
See, Councilmember Mart, you're next.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Michelle. Kind of a multi-part question. Are there any cities in Western Washington other than Seattle and Tacoma that use body cameras?
I don't know of all of them. I can tell you off the top of my head, Tacoma just recently implemented a body worn camera program, Kent Police Department, Everett, Normandy Park.
Those are those are the main, those are some of the some of the instances around King County that are utilizing them. And it's a range of mandatory versus voluntary compliance as well.
Okay. And then the second question would be, do we have an idea of what the costs are? Seattle's been doing it longer than than any of these other cities, right? Do we have an idea of what their costs are in terms of, you know, what what you're saying is it's basically it's about a 10 to one ratio of sworn officers to staff to do redacting? Do we know how that compares to Seattle as a metric?
We have not dove deep enough into see what the comparisons are.
Okay.
But I would say the redaction requirements would be pretty similar because of the Washington State Public Disclosure Laws.
All right. Thank you.
And if I can add to that, one of the challenges that we know that Seattle has faced is delay in releasing those videos or or getting that information out from those public disclosures has actually created quite a bit of litigation in the city of Seattle. And we know that they have a certain amount of staff working on the on this. However, to keep up with the volume, they've struggled with that, which has then created a lot of litigation for access to these for these videos. So setting it up right from the beginning to avoid that and to avoid that delay, because there is a changing in community expectation when there's a there's an incident, how quickly it can be turned around. And and, you know, some of that, the lessons learned is, is that you have to be able to have the staff to be able to do it right from the beginning.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from council? I I do have a question, but I will defer to my fellow councilmembers first. Councilmember Ray?
I'm not sure if this is a question or a comment, but I think I can probably frame it as a question. So it occurs to me, I saw something not that many months ago related to facial recognition and auto redaction of video. And so I know when Seattle looked at this in, as Commander Truscott said, in 2017, it was fairly prohibited in terms of cost, but also I think that this is technology that's that has moved really, really, really quickly. So I guess my question is, would it be possible to do a market scan and see what's available on the market right now for auto redaction? I don't want to move forward with a highly labor intensive redaction process, but I would be interested in seeing if there was some more automated approach to it that's come on the market in the last couple of years.
Yeah, so there is software that is available for auto redaction that might come with whatever soft body camera program that you purchase or you could purchase it separately. The lessons learned or the problems that come with the automatic redaction software is that you still need a human on one end of it to do a quality assurance check. Because if an agency releases one frame that divulges somebody's identity or a license plate or an address inadvertently, that's a very large liability. So. Um, so, uh, Seattle was not, uh, pleased with the quality of the redaction at that time. It has improved, um, the, the software that's available has improved. Uh, but, uh, my recommendation, and I think best practices, would still be to have a human go through and do the quality assurance.
And if I can add to that, well, one of the aspects that there is a concern is when you start talking about facial recognition, um, and what, how is that data stored? And if you're talking, I mean, yes, you can maybe implant an image, but then there's always a community conversation further about when you use that term facial recognition. So we'd want to have a, a, a really robust conversation uh, with the community of understanding about that.
Yeah. A, a, amen, Chief. Um, it's just this, you know, the, this is an evolving, uh, um, area. And, and so, you know, it may need to be a question of not today, but when? Um, but there's, I think we just need to be, um, looking at the, the upside potential of having the data and that point of view versus the cost of maintaining it and, and any subsequent liability. And when we, we, we cross the threshold where it becomes more valuable than it is, uh, expensive, then we need to consider it. And while it's still in the area of maybe being more expensive than valuable, then we, we continue to study it. That's, that's my, uh, my ask.
All right. Any other further questions? So, um, Chief Beerbaum, you've heard my concern earlier about, um, those moments in people's lives when a police officer shows up. Um, it may not involve any criminal behavior whatsoever. Uh, and I'm just going to give a, a, an example. An elderly woman walking, uh, around in downtown Issaquah and can't remember how to get home. Uh, the police were called and escorted her, were able to find out where she lived and escorted her home. Would that kind of an interaction, would you keep the video? Uh, because it didn't involve any criminality whatsoever? Is it, if it's a police interaction, do you have to automatically keep it? Or do you, would you remove something like that? Or, you know, is something that minor but personal going to be a part of the record forever because it was on a police camera?
That is a, that, that's a great question. Um, there's a few answers to that. Um, there is a policy decision behind retention of police interactions. And then Commander Truscott would like to add something also to that.
Um, yeah, and it is, it's kind of a, a bigger question further down the road of policy decisions of what interactions you do and don't record. Retention laws will be based upon what that event is related to or retention policies. Um, but I think best practice is if you record an event, there is some kind of retention, um, because it's protection of the agency, the officer and the community member. If that community member comes back and wants to file a complaint, um, and then the police department says, oh, we don't have the video anymore, or makes, you know, makes some type of allegation. Um, so, but that, I think that's a policy question that is very valid and would be discussed further down the road with the implementation of the program.
And you say, and, you know, as, as part of that, um, it is, it is that transparency in the public trust. Because what, what we are very cognizant of is once you start storing that data, there is a community expectation that you are not arbitrarily deleting data. And there's people who are going to say, well, we'd like to have access to it. Why, what are you trying to hide? Why don't you have it? And so it is, it, that's why we need to, again, this is like a larger, you know, policy decision on retention. And then there's a lot of education that goes into, you know, into this as well in the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any further questions? I know we have a comment, but, um, and I've seen the clerk has said that there are still no members of public on the call at this time for a public comment. So, uh, I think that we could move ahead to comments and Councilmember Martz has a comment.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Uh, yeah, it's really, it's interesting to me. I have really heard civil rights passions in the community on both sides of the body cam issue. Um, I was somewhat surprised in talking to people at the BLM protests this summer that there were, I would have expected that it was sort of unanimity in wanting to have body cameras, and I didn't hear that. So I, I very much understand and support the idea of, um, putting this before an equity commission. I do think it's important to at least move forward with that conversation. Um, I think that, um, you know, I sort of, uh, I don't, I, I, it's expensive, but if it's the right thing to do and if it improves public safety, uh, then we should do it. Um, but, but we should form it out of the community because it, there are, um, the public, it, it, like I said, it surprised me, uh, the reaction in the community uh, to the idea of, of these cameras being out, um, and in the public. Um, I would say, you know, I personally would be very interested, um, assuming the Equity Commission wants to move forward in some way or the other, I'd be very, very interested to see some of these case studies of Kent and Everett and Normandy Park. And I realize some of them are quite new, but what could we learn from their implementations? Uh, if, if we want to consider this? And if, if something is brought before the council for consideration, I would hope that we could, we could get some information on those locations. Now, I am super disappointed to hear that we are down two sworn officers from where we were January 1st. This is exactly what I was worried about last fall when we cut five officers out of the budget for 2021. And at the time, I was assured by the administration that we were going to figure out how to keep the number of sworn officers at the same level. Now we're down two. And I realize we're trying to fill those positions, but you know, we always talked about, um, you have more recs than you have positions that you need so that you don't get behind. And now the exact thing that I said I was concerned about when we approved this budget, the exact thing has happened. So I would hope that we, as a council, will have a conversation about what the right budgetary staffing level should be for the IPD. I said when I supported this budget that, you know, I don't want to wait for the 2022 budget to potentially make corrections. Uh, it is important. I think what I heard from everybody this summer, uh, was that, you know, you do need uniformed officers. There are, uh, there are questions about what policy should be and what training should be and what, uh, you know, responses to bad officers should be and all that kind of stuff. But it all starts with having enough officers on the street uh, to support public safety in our community. So I am, I just cannot say how disappointed I am to see that the exact thing that I was worried about from six months ago has now come to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Uh, thank you. So I, um, if there is a, uh, something that the council can do to help with, uh, um, the staffing situation, then I would like to have another conversation about that. And we reserve some money specifically, um, for, uh, that type of a reason. And it was, um, specifically, uh, talked about at budget. We had a reserve for that. So if we need to have that conversation, we need to have that conversation. Uh, we have heard about the, uh, uptick in crime. I realize we have a pandemic, um, but can't blame everything on pandemic and, uh, can't ignore things just because of a pandemic. Um, the, the, I think the questions tonight we have about whether to gather additional information needed to include a police body camera program in the 2022 budget process. My, uh, personal view is I have not heard, um, enough of an, um, an upswell from the, um, the broader community front to justify, uh, thinking about something for 2022. Uh, we have a lot of, um, big fish to fry, so to speak, coming out of a pandemic and a lot of uncertainty. And I think we have, um, more important priorities, um, than that. Um, that, but that's, that's my thought for 2022. I don't think we should be putting a bunch of time and resources into trying to figure out whether we want to do something in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator, uh, Bob Kowits has a comment.
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilmember De Michelle, members of the council. I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, police hiring and I, I'm sure Chief Beerbaum will supplement, uh, these comments. Uh, we are doing exactly as we promised, uh, during the budget process. Uh, the chief police has a free hand, uh, to continue hiring, uh, to the greatest extent possible. Uh, what we are seeing, however, not only in the, in the greater Seattle area, but also throughout the country, is a tremendous amount of change, uh, in the policing profession. Uh, we are seeing officers, uh, leaving the department to, uh, go to other agencies. We are seeing officers leaving the department, uh, to get out of law enforcement. Um, the, what has happened in the world over the last six, eight months has had a profound impact on law enforcement, not only in this area, but around the country. So we are working diligently, uh, to bring, uh, officers here. The chief has a free hand, uh, to hire. He, once he fills, uh, the number of vacancies we have, he has authority, uh, to over hire. Uh, but we are faced with a very fluid, uh, marketplace right now. There are officers, uh, moving all around. Uh, Commander Truscott, uh, says she's from another agency, but I don't know that it's any great secret that she comes to us from the Seattle Police Department. Uh, and we have had lots of interest among Seattle police officers, uh, to come work in Issaquah. Similarly, we've seen a number of, uh, officers leave we had not expected, uh, who are going, uh, to other agencies in the region. We've had one officer leave to become a firefighter. Uh, we've had one officer, and I think at least one officer leave the area, uh, to go back, uh, to, uh, uh, family, uh, in another area. Um, so there's a lot of things happening. But I want to assure the council that the chief has, uh, full authority to hire as quickly as possible. I see Stephanie Johnson turn her camera on as well. Uh, there's, uh, a lot of work happening in our HR, uh, group. It takes a little bit of time to hire police officers, but we're doing it as expeditiously as we can. Chief Beerbaum, I don't know if you want to add to any of those comments?
You, you know, you hit on the highlights. We have been doing continuous hiring processes and it, and we have discussed with the council before. It does take time and energy to, to bring them on board and get them up and running and trained as well. Uh, but yes, we are in the process of, of backgrounds on several officers. That's truly what is our, our priority. That is what we're putting a lot of our energy into is, is, is working on staffing. That has been our focus and will continue to be our focus, uh, until we get full staff and then some. Um, we recognize that that is an ongoing piece. It's not just the, the hiring, but it's also the retention. So what are the things that we can do as an organization to, to retain officers in, you know, in our community and in the profession? So it is an ongoing, uh, uh, we're spending a lot of, a lot of time and energy on this because we recognize that that is our priority.
Director Johnson, did you want to speak?
You know, I really, um, I, I think City Administrator Bob Kowitz and Chief Beerbaum summarized it well. Um, we do have processes in place to focus on both entry and lateral recruitment. Um, we are doing, you know, interviews, um, really kind of monthly right now and at this time. Um, we look at our neighboring jurisdictions for best practice and how we can attract and retain those candidates. So I think it was summarized well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Martz, your turn.
Thank you. Um, so in hiring that I do, the more open recs I have, the more qualified candidates I can consider at any given time. And if a certain fraction of those candidates choose not to come here or, or to my company, uh, I still have a, a, a better pipeline and a, and a better number of onboarding if I have more recs. So I get that, uh, there have been, uh, the ability to do hiring, but it's, it's also true that number of recs affects, uh, affects pipeline. And I know that, uh, 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 otherwise, otherwise, what did it mean that we cut five positions out of the budget last year? Right? Because if we said that we were going to keep the same number of uniformed officers, but we cut open recs, it wouldn't have had, it wouldn't have had any impact, right? If we were just going to keep that, that, uh, at the number of open recs. So I would like, and I have requested additional information from the chief and, uh, City Administrator, uh, about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, City Administrator Bob Kowitz.
Uh, again, let me just reemphasize that we are in a continuous hiring process. That there are, as, as, as qualified applicants are identified, they're, uh, selected, they go through the appropriate background and processes and they're hired. So there is no limitation to that at this point. We will continue to hire, uh, every qualified candidate that we identify.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before we close this out? All right. I, I did want to weigh in. Um, I would like to say that I agree that we should wait on body, body cameras for police. I'm in agreement with Councilmember Goodman. I haven't heard or seen a great upwelling of community interest in this topic. I have talked with officers who would welcome cameras to protect them from false allegations. So I have heard those voices. However, I believe the costs of storage and management are prohibitive. And plus, I will again reiterate my concern about the privacy of people who are caught in non-criminal situations. Um, and, uh, how we store and manage those, uh, videotapes is a great concern to me. So at this time, I think we should wait and see before acting. Um, are we prepared to go on to the next item then? Okay. Um, the next item is ID 0845, school resource officer.
Councilmember De Michelle, uh, Councilmember Hall, I believe, has a comment.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I missed you. Councilmember Hall, go ahead.
No, that wasn't, it's not your fault. I snuck it in at the very last minute too. Uh, this is Councilmember Hall. I just wanted to say for the sake of, um, direction, I would be very disappointed if this topic drops off our radar, even if we're not, um, considering it, um, for next year's budget. I think we did hear it, um, from many members of the community, whether or not that's, um, the majority of the community needs to be investigated, in my opinion. So I think the idea of bringing it to a, a potential new city commission on equity sounds like a great idea. If it's, if there isn't something like that, that, um, comes to fruition, um, an existing border commission or a, even a, a larger community convening like we did, like the Human Services Commission convened, um, in the previous months, that sounds good too. But I think we have some more work to do, um, to better identify whether or not this is a, remains a community priority. I'm not willing to write it off quite yet. And I'm not necessarily saying either that other councilmembers are saying that. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now or never? All right. Uh, let's go on to, uh, ID 0845, school resource officers, and back to Chief Beerbaum.
All right. Permit me to, uh, try to get my technology to work appropriately. Uh, see if I can do this correctly this time. Okay. We are now on, and now I can officially remove my mask now that Commander Truscott has, uh, left as well. Uh, we are now on to discuss, uh, school resource officers as part of the Police Accountability Action Plan. Uh, in November, we discussed school resource officers and the conversation or the interest from the council was to, to have further discussion in preparation for the expiration of the current MOU that exists between the city of Issaquah and the Issaquah School District. Uh, just for history, the school resource officer program was started in 2000, uh, in, in agreement between the school district and the city of Issaquah to provide police services within the schools, primarily within Issaquah High School and Issaquah Middle School. And, uh, since then, we have revisited that contract approximately every five years. And again, we're due for, um, a conversation about the MOU in, on June 30th. As part of the, um, today's, uh, conversation is really to get input from city council on next steps for, uh, engagement regarding our school resource officers. Again, the school resource officers was started in 2000 and, uh, the first school resource officer that actually worked within Issaquah High School was, uh, myself. I had the opportunity to provide that service, uh, for the city of Issaquah, um, and entering into the kind of the daily operations within the schools, uh, working, um, at the schools and working with the students and working with the, uh, parents and staff as well. The role of a school resource officer is to provide mentorship. The role of a School Resource Officer is to provide mentorship, provide education, and of course, perform enforcement aspects within the schools if needed. Often, school resource officers do partner with the schools and have an opportunity to get within the classroom and teach or to help assist with different classes and interactions with law enforcement, from everything from like traffic services to some of like the social services as well. Significant amount of training, and again, we talked about this back in November, but as a refresher regarding school resource officers, there is mandated training for school resource officers that are associated with, of course, interacting with juveniles, interacting with mental health issues, social services, interacting with bias as well, or, you know, for different training aspects. There is a significant amount of training as mandated by state law of how school resource, school resource, I apologize, school resource officers are trained for that position. Put it in another context also, within the Issaquah School District, there are a couple of other entities providing law enforcement services for schools. So obviously, the City of Issaquah provides school resource officer positions for Issaquah High School, but then King County Sheriff's Office provides SROs for Somamish, Skyline High School up in Somamish, and then Liberty High School outside of the city as well. Truly, as today's update is kind of to talk about next steps with school resource officers. We do understand that earlier this month, there was a conversation between the school district or a couple of members from school district, school board, council, and city administration, and there was a joint, there was an expression of a joint interest in convening a community meeting, and that to have a greater discussion about the role or the interest in school resource officers within the schools in the City of Issaquah. I think that's an opportunity to hear from our community members. But one of the aspects that I also want to bring up that we talked about back in November was involving the students themselves. And that was an aspect that I think we need to make sure that that is included in any further discussions of how school resource officers are involved in the schools, or if we continue that program as well. Again, there's an interest of hosting that meeting. Originally, that's our plan, is to try and convene a meeting with the school district and within our community, potentially in March, early April, to be able to come back in May at the next police accountability update, and then make a determination whether or not we refresh the memorandum of understanding with the school district. That also provides us an opportunity to take a look at how we do our operations with the School Resource Officer position, and if there is any adjustments to the program that may need to be done or could be recommended to maybe provide even a better service to our community. Truly, the next steps on this is, what we're asking for is, what does council want to move with on the School Resource Officer position? The intent of the position, or is there an interest on having that community engagement moving forward in these next couple of months prior to coming back to council in May to have a further discussion on the Police Accountability Action Plan? And I will pause for a moment on that.
Thank you. Let's start off with questions. Does anybody have a question? All right. I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, Councilmember, Council President Hunt first, and then Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I had emailed in this question, but the question is around the changing nature of the work of the SROs and specifically around digital or online, online interactions and police officer involvement with online interactions in schools. And I wonder if you could speak to how that's changed over time and the role of SROs in that, but then also if there are other, other things that communities do to mitigate that differently, or if there are other models out there around online harassment and the other online, social media type issues.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. To address that a little bit further, yes, the role in the SRO, what they see, what kind of crimes they see within the schools has evolved over time. When I first was SRO, we barely had cell phones. So yes, the online social media interaction was maybe not as great. It evolved. It's same, falls under harassment or bullying, and those are some of the aspects that's just moved to that online platform. Organizations have focused on kind of a multi-pronged approach, where everything from involving the school, community, involving the students themselves on their individual accountability, focusing on working with the parents to have a better awareness and involvement in their students' online activities, working with the schools to help amplify that message as well. And of course, the police department, we're going to be involved with if it rises to that level of criminality. Where it rises to that level of criminality, of course, is some of the ongoing harassment or like obviously racial harassment, or, you know, some sort of online threats as well as what we see. Or it also sometimes goes into sexual content as well. And there's, of course, there's a lot of education that needs to go around of images that are shared as well. So there, there's that level of involvement with some of like technology with social media and, you know, cell phones as well. A lot of the same type of investigations, whether it's be it's theft or assault, those are some of the same types of investigations. What we have actually seen also an increase of is interactions with child protective services. So CPS is another aspect that our SROs are deeply involved with. And we do get a lot of referrals directly from CPS to check on the welfare of students. They know that that is an opportunity to interact with the student in kind of a more protective environment rather than at the home. So there is quite a bit of involvement with school resource officers in that as well. Obviously, originally, one of the initial conversations in 2000 for the implementation, of course, was drug involvement. We've seen the, you know, kind of the ups and downs, or the kind of the rise and fall of drug issues and alcohol issues within the schools or within, you know, within that the student population. That has kind of been, there's ebb and flow to that as well. It's going to continue to evolve. We've also seen fraud or, you know, identity theft, again, kind of more along the lines of that social media platform or the online platforms. So we're spending a lot of time following up on those as well. So it does continue to evolve, it will continue to evolve. We have some very clever individuals who find new ways to leverage technology, and so that's, our SROs are continually involved in that as well. Outside of the criminal aspects, we do continue to see the mental health aspects, a lot of growth in that, crisis intervention. That's always has been a role of anyone that works within the schools, whether it's a teacher, a council, or a police officer. There's a lot of involvement with the students on just helping them navigate either the kind of like the social services, the human services aspect, whether it's mental health or crisis or economic issues. There's a lot of things that we end up getting involved with.
Do you have any further questions, Council President Hunt?
No, thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I actually have three questions, so I'll take them in order. I think you mentioned something about the other high schools in the Issaquah School District, Liberty and Skyline. Do they have SROs or, because I think you were saying that the SRO program that we're talking about here is an officer assigned to Issaquah High School, who also serves some of the other local schools. So what's the situation for the other schools in the district?
So Somamish Police Department, which is actually King County Sheriff's Office, provides an SRO. There's contracts with the Issaquah School District for School Resource Officer Services at Skyline High School and at Liberty High School. So it goes through Somamish High School, but then also through King County Sheriff's Office as well. So yes, they have historically had school resource officers working within their schools.
Okay, thank you. And I know our contract has a, like, we share costs between the city and the school district. Is that a 50/50 cost share, or do you know what that is?
It is approximately the salary, to try and steal the wording from the contract or the MOU directly, the true salary of the SRO times 0.5 times 10/12. So basically, we pay half of, the school pays for half of the salary of the officer for about 10 months of the year.
Okay, okay, makes sense. And then third question is just talking about the situation of the officers when they're in a school environment and with minors and students. Are they carrying a weapon into the school?
Historically, police officers, when they are assigned to the School Resource Officer position, at least within all the schools that within Issaquah School District have carried weapons, they've worn uniforms or variations of uniforms in the school, in the school environment. So yes, they are carrying weapons on, just like a normal police officer on the street typically does.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. So if the administration is looking for feedback, the SRO program is extremely important to families with students at Issaquah High. I got a big dose of that a few years ago when there were potential changes in the SRO, and man, oh man, did I hear from parents at Issaquah High, this is considered an essential position. You know, schools have changed so much since when I was in high school. When I was in high school, you'd get called out for fistfights and you'd have to go fight guys. And that was just how it was. And I went to a nice high school in White Bear Lake, Minnesota. It's just, that's what you did. And so the environment, what we, what we expect in terms of safety for our students now is, thank goodness, a lot higher than it was in the 1980s. And I believe a non-trivial fraction of that is having SROs and, you know, creating an ongoing expectation of safety in our schools. And so, boy, oh boy, do I hear about that from parents, and am I glad that we're a part of that, and we have a great and highly professional police force, and the fact that they can be involved in helping keep our kids safe is just a really good feature of having our own police force and being able to make these decisions. So I am, I am 100% on board for having an SRO. Thank you.
A dollar for the jar. Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. This is Chris Ray. Oh, I don't know, I guess about three or four weeks ago, the council president and I met with the school board leadership and the superintendent of the school board to talk about convening in this public meeting. The school board was very supportive, as was the superintendent, of getting together and doing this outreach to the community. And I, I think that's the absolutely essential next step, and the sooner rather than later. So I'm, I'm glad to see that that's on the docket. I think we also want to leverage the school district in getting that set up. They have actually much better access to the students and the parents of the students than we typically do. So engaging them in doing the outreach would be extremely important. And I also like the chief's idea very, very much about engaging the students in this conversation, because they have a different perspective and a different set of needs than their parents do. My two cents.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. This is Councilmember Hall. Yeah, I'll just add also that I think this is the appropriate next step to have a joint community conversation about this with the broader community, with parents, with youth. In particular, you know, we heard last year, also many youth talk about the impact, you know, whether the intention, whether the intent is there or not, we talked, we heard a lot from youth, too, about the impact of SROs on their personal behavioral health and their learning environment, too. So we just need to make sure we're also calling attention to their needs, listening to them as part of this conversation, too. So yeah, no, I just wanted to say this is the appropriate next step. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments? Chief Beerbomb.
I'll defer to Council President Hunt. I think she had her comment at first.
There you go. Councilmember, or Council President Hunt.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I'll be brief. I, I think that a next step is this community convening. I think especially in light of the changes that have happened over time with the kind of work that police officers in the SRO position are doing, I think it would be good to touch base with the community and have this convening and then get feedback from that. And I would be supportive of the convening.
Great. Chief Beerbomb, is it all right if I ask a question before you wrap up? And I had a two-part question, and the first part may be for City Administrator Bob Kowitz to answer. I was thinking about, we have this Open Public Meeting Act restriction that keeps the number of council members and the number of school board members that could be present at a public meeting. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can establish this community meeting so that all of us or all of us who want to attend could attend, and all of the school board members who want to attend could attend? Is that, is there some legal way of doing that?
Councilmember DeMichelle, members of the council, yes, absolutely. We would just notice it as meetings of both bodies. So that's something we certainly can do.
Thank you. And then you touched on this, Chief Beerbomb, and I will just say that it is sometimes very intimidating for students to come in front of a lot, a lot of adults and speak publicly. And so if we can give students multiple ways of communicating with us, I think that would be really appropriate, whether that's small meetings or online or, you know, something creative that would appeal to them. But I, I just have been in too many meetings where young people find it very difficult to voice their opinion in front of a large number of adults. So if we can come up with some alternative ways, I think it would be great. And that's, are there any other comments? And then I'll turn it back to you, Chief Beerbomb. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I agree with Councilmember DeMichelle to make sure that we have, we are, we have methods of receiving meaningful input from students. And not only is it intimidating, but I think the things, the kinds of things that people have to say, they might not be comfortable saying in public. And I also want to make sure that we have all of the right voices at the table. I call them the strangers, make sure we have all the strangers at the table, people who don't necessarily think like everybody else that's in the group. It's easy to think of parents and students and the city council and the school board, but there's also staff. And I also would think that maybe one of the questions isn't just, do we continue with a SRO program? Maybe the one, one of the questions is, is there an alternative way to deal with the issues that we're trying to deal with in schools, given that they are evolving? Maybe it's not a police officer. Maybe it's a police officer and something else. Maybe, I don't know, but, you know, things have changed a lot in 20 years. And so maybe it just shouldn't be about SROs. Maybe we should be open to some other creative ideas. I don't know what they are, but that's my comment. Thanks so much.
Just waiting to see if somebody else would like to comment. All right, Chief Beerbomb, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Just to add to the student level, I do know that there is a student-led kind of equity group that is really stepping forward in a lot of conversations, and they have some really strong voices, and they're willing to come forward to, like, I'm, I am sure they're willing to be a part of this meeting and to maybe help facilitate making sure that the voices are heard. So that is, I mean, some of the interactions that I've had with them, they are very articulate, they are very engaged, they are very willing to be a part of these They are very engaged, they are very willing to be a part of these community conversations. So I think that, that would be a good group to help facilitate those and address those concerns with making sure that they're, they're heard.
Thank you. Is there, are there any further comments on this item? So we have two more items on the agenda and then we have an executive session. It is nine o'clock, so we've been sitting for two and a half hours. So I'm wondering if we should take a five-minute break now, rather than when we go to executive session? I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads and thumbs up. So let us, let's, let's take a short break and we'll be back at 9:06. All right, thank you. You should, did my sound clear up?
You know, it did, and your video has been strong. It seems like the beginning of the meeting is, is the hardest part. And I've noticed this in past meetings too.
Yeah.
Thank goodness, and thank you for your patience. We've had multiple technical challenges tonight, so, thank you. And Councilmember De Michelle, I'm sure you recall this, but we'll want to give David a brief heads-up before starting again.
Yes. There we go. David, are we ready? All right. All right, welcome back to the Issaquah City Council meeting. And we are going to go ahead with the next item, which is ID 0847, Human Services Commission Equity Work. And it's being presented by Monica Negrilla, our Human Services Manager. Monica, go, take, take it away.
Thank you very much, Councilmember De Michelle. I'm gonna try to share my screen here. Just a moment. I hope this is working. So thank you for having us back tonight. I'm gonna focus on providing an update on the equity work conducted by the Human Services Commission related to the city's equity initiatives. And we are also looking, city, we are looking for feedback from city council regarding the identified next steps into this process. So it's just a brief background, the Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan tasked the Human Services Commission with reviewing the role of residents in the city's equity initiatives and returning to council with recommendations regarding a possible changes to the role and scope of the Human Services Commission or with possibly creating a new equity commission. And so, part of that is, right after the Police Accountability Action Plan was endorsed by council in September, the Human Services Commission outlined a tentative process and timeline to, to do this work. And so we created like a three-step process. First, we identified this research and planning community activation phase. And then we also identified like a community engagement phase, followed by a final summary and recommendations. And so more specifically, in September, we invited and engaged with various community members of diverse racial backgrounds to be partners in this process. We engaged with the Student Equity Council at the school. We also engaged with a couple of grassroots community, or not organizations, but groups with also individual community members and also with the Right to Breed Committee. We also conducted a mid-year commission member recruitment to ensure that we have diverse community members being part of the commission and being part of this conversation early on. In addition, we heard from our city's equity team on the city's equity initiatives. The commission also engaged in an equity training and personal growth. And then we also formed a planning group that included three of the commissioners and also our city equity consultant at that time. So this process lasted until December. And then at that time, the planning group and the consultant, Dr. Pat Effiong, worked on really planning out the community engagement process. And so we identified the need to really have authentic conversations with our community members. And for this, we conducted three focus groups. We directly sent invitations to diverse community members to be part of this conversation. We had a total of about 40 community members participate in the three focus groups. So the, the groups were fairly small, but provided for an opportunity to really have and hear input and feedback from community members and really have authentic conversations. We followed those focus groups by two large community convenings where we invited the entire community. Each of the community convenings had about 50-plus participants attending. So we really, that also provided an opportunity for further conversations and hearing from, from our members in, in the community. There are two action items that we postponed initially. These were included in our planning phase. But we later decided on one, and due to timing, and also we wanted to postpone a couple of conversations, including what other cities and jurisdictions are doing until, after the community engagement process. And then also reviewing the Human Services Commission bylaws and looking further into that. And so these two items are still planned for actually later this week and then next month. And so this concludes the second, planning the community engagement process. And I'm gonna pause a little bit so I can provide a little bit of additional information on what we heard during the community engagement, both in focus groups and in the larger convenings. We really heard that from community members that feeling heard is very, very important, is crucial. Community members really expressed a desire to build relationship with police. And they also felt like there is a need for a long-term commitment on, on that. And there was also slight fear that perhaps, that perhaps this topic will be forgotten if we don't continue to focus on it. Community members also expressed an interest in cultural events and also expressed interest in coordinating and communicating with other systems, especially the school district. Also, we, we heard from community members that there is a need for a system of accountability, for an oversight committee that needs to have weight and power in, in making recommendations for policy decisions and changes. And then also, we, we heard that there really is a desire to engage in continuous conversation on, on equity issues and that this work does not have to happen only on, on one level. But it really is a multi-level work that needs to happen at the individual level, at the relational level, and in the community and at a system level also. So based on the feedback that we heard from the community, the planning group and with the aid of our consultant, we tried to put the feedback that we heard in a different buckets based on kind of like which system or which community partners address those specific issues. So for example, in the green quadrant here, we, we put all the feedback that we heard regarding the school district or curriculum or students. And, and we put them there knowing that the school district and the Student Equity Council are addressing those issues. So then we could refer our community members to continue building a relationship with the school district. And that in, in the future, we will also have an opportunity to coordinate and kind of like communicate with our school district. But that we as a city directly, we cannot directly influence the work that's going at this, going on at the school district. However, we would be, love to be partners in communicating and coordinating efforts. We also put in the next bucket down here, the gray bucket perhaps, we put the, the issues that we heard regarding building a community and cultural events and a need for other diversity events, such as the welcoming week or events that celebrate different cultures, languages and communities. And so we know that there are various community-based and faith-based organizations who really work at various levels to put together different events. And so, again, we would love to support them in any way as we can as a city and elevate those voices. And then, of course, we heard of, about other issues that are human services-related, but also perhaps sometimes we heard of need for community resources. And we understand that these are issues that the Human Services Commission is doing. So then we, we put them in that separate bucket. And then lastly, in this blue quadrant, we kept the feedback and the input that we heard regarding a need for racial equity, for looking at the city policies and for building the relationship with our police department. So this is what we heard from the community. And so this created the opportunity to take back the feedback that we heard to the Human Services Commission and perhaps continue to look into that proposing and looking into how recommendations regarding the possible, possibly an equity board or commission for the city. And so that's where we are right now. Actually, the Human Services Commission is meeting later this week on Thursday to actually formally look at and summarize all the information that we learned through the community conversations and the convenings. Also, at that time, the commission will review similar work done by other jurisdictions. And then we'll further discuss the creation of an equity board or commission to include title, membership, excuse me, role and scope for such commission duties and responsibilities. So this will happen this week, as I said, and perhaps also in March, if the conversation needs to also be extended in March. And then following that, we hope that the commission is going to be able to make recommendations to the mayor and city council on the options, either on the modified Human Services Commission and an equity commission, or a new equity board commission or something else. Again, just highlighting those, though here, we did hear from the community that, oh, the Human Services Commission has a significant workload and that perhaps a new board on equity or commission makes more sense. However, I'm highlighting these options just because the Human Services Commission did not formally yet take a decision on this. And so with that in summarizing, we would love to hear feedback. And so with that in summarizing, we would love to hear feedback from council on whether our identified next steps make sense. We would hope to return to council with the formal recommendations, sometimes either at the end of April or early May. And then also, if there's anything that you believe we missed in this process so far, or any additional information might be needed, we would love to hear that feedback. And with that, I'm going to stop sharing, so I can be available for questions.
Great. Do we have any council questions from the council? Sorry.
Thank you. I think earlier in the presentations, Chief Beerbaum had mentioned that there's potential for a community oversight that could be required by the state. And then I noticed also in the contemplated roles and responsibilities for this new board, that it also has a police relations, community, I think, component to it. And so I wondered if there had been any consideration or what the thinking is around what happens, and does it affect this formation of a board or commission? Does the state oversight committee have an impact here?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. And I just realized that I mentioned that briefly in my report, but I did not mention it in my presentation, that I think it does definitely make sense. And we are hoping with the timing that it will align. We would like to keep an eye on what the state legislation is going to propose. And then we are working and coordinating with our police chief. And so definitely, perhaps if the Human Services Commission did not make the recommendations, it would be great to align those recommendations and look for opportunities to merge those two.
Chief Beerbaum, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I can add to Council President Hunt's question comment. The legislation that's in front is really truly pointed at police actions. So where I think the overlap would be is the new Community Equity Commission would be involved with all things city, whereas this, the potential legislation will only be directed at police interaction. So yeah, we'll keep a close eye on that and then of course have that interaction with human services and the next evolution.
I do have a comment or question, maybe more of a question. It sounds to me, when I was reading it, that there's a little subtle nuance in there in that they're not talking so much about oversight as they are talking about relationships with the police. And that had a very different feel to me than the traditional police oversight commission, which is often a very adversarial group with the police. So I'm just wondering if there was a reason why they chose the word relationship rather than oversight? Was that what you were hearing from the public? Or maybe you can talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, thank you very much for that question. Yes, at this point so far, in the focus groups or in the larger convenings, we did not necessarily hear the word oversight. It was more the relationship building. People are really interested in being heard and really building relationships. So that's what we heard so far.
Thank you. And Council President Hunt, you're next, and then Councilmember Walsh.
I already went.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Walsh then.
I think actually Councilmember Hall was right in front of me.
All right, good. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Just a quick clarifying question for Monica. So the policy question that will be before Human Services Commission isn't just whether or not to establish a new commission, right? It's one, to consider changing the scope of the Human Services Commission, to consider changing the scope of any other boards or commission, or having a new citywide commission on equity. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. That is in the action plan. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, and Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. At this point in the information, I haven't seen enough that would convince me that we need another commission. I'm pretty protective of staff time and community effort as well. And so I haven't seen anything that's really leading me down that path. So I think the things that would make me more interested in doing so is really understanding if the current Human Services Commission just really cannot take that on, and what the, not the product of, but what the scope of that commission would be, where it would not fit into the scope of a current commission. I think I'm just, I'm having a hard time separating out some of these ideas and understanding why it can't happen under one particular realm. And so those are kind of the questions that are going through my mind that I would be interested to hear about in a future presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Watling would like to add a comment.
He would. For some reason, his camera's not working. I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Jeff Watling. Thanks for the time. Great question, Councilmember Walsh. I think this next step is going to be really important work for the Human Services Commission to really think through those very questions. And I think they certainly look forward to framing up a recommendation and thinking through that. I just wanted to add in general, I want to commend Monica and the Human Services Commission for this approach. Having worked directly with Monica and the commission throughout this process, being really deliberate and intentional about having focus group conversations as well as the convenings, I think we found to be really advantageous and allowed us to have some really authentic conversation about some hard topics. Talking about racial equity is not an easy conversation. And so I just, I wanted to commend Monica and the commission for doing the work. As we start looking at other really important community conversations, such as a school resource officer, I just, I want to reinforce that the importance and the value of focus group conversations can really help really get feedback from all communities and all communities of color. So again, thanks for letting me add the comment. Great work, Monica and commission, as we continue this work.
Thank you. Are there any more comments to give to the administration on future actions? I will just add that I thought it was a very, very thorough process that you went through, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the Human Services Commission recommends in the end. So thank you so much for all the work, lots of hard work, and we appreciate it very much. We'll go on to the last item tonight. Oh, sorry. Did somebody want to say something? Okay.
I apologize. I was just saying thank you. Have a good night. So sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. That's all right. The last item tonight is ID 0848, City Council Equity Training, and I will turn it over to Human Services Director Stephanie Johnson.
Good evening. Let me do a good old share here. Make sure we're displaying okay. If somebody could give me the thumbs up or comment that it's displaying on my presentation. No?
Not yet.
It's saying starting to share content, so maybe it's loading a presentation or something.
I'll give it a second here. It tells me I'm sharing, so maybe you're right, that it's just taking a minute.
There it is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. So the last item on the agenda tonight is to provide an update on what's next for you all on the next City Council Equity Training, and also solicit your feedback on timing and dates. So you may recall, it was back in August of 2020, we did our first baseline training with council. It helped us learn about the history of statistic racism, implicit bias, impacts on decision-making, and ensure we're using common language. When we came to you for the last Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Update, we asked the question of the council, what you desire for the next training. And the staff takeaway from that was that you wanted to focus on two areas: racial equity framework and how that could inform council decision-making, and then in future, also how we can take this work and connect it to the community. Benita Horn was the trainer that you all, you know, spent time with back in August of Benita Horn and Associates. We have been talking to her about the next opportunity for training for that framework, you know, what an equity lens looks like. I mentioned earlier in presentations this evening interchangeably called a framework, a toolkit, an equity lens. But the next training would focus on why you would want to use one, and actually walk you through some examples using different frameworks, you know, different organizations that are a little further along in this work than we are here in Issaquah, but such as those used currently by Seattle and King County in Action. Maybe that's, you know, using that framework or equity lens in a city project recruitment. It could be the budget process, but so that you understand what that framework is and how that could be relevant to your work as a council. So tonight, just looking for, you know, feedback to make sure that we're still on target with council expectations around those two focus areas that you told us back in November you wanted training on, and then figure out what date works best next for said training.
Thank you. We have a question from Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Thanks, Stephanie. What does Benita contemplate the length of this second training to be? Because if my recollection is right, the first one was rather long.
It was. And this one is intended to be about half that time. So the first one was about four hours. This would be a two-hour training.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? I cannot see everybody, so you'll need to put it in the chat.
I too am going to stop sharing just because I lose all the comments and faces when I'm sharing. So, you know, one thing we can do is play around with some dates offline. I do, you know, I know the administration was asking, you know, today in terms of dates that the trainer is available. I can certainly share those forward so that we're not all necessarily pulling out our calendars tonight. I know you have a executive session following this. So I guess, you know, if we could walk away tonight with, you know, an understanding that this is still the avenue of the content of the training and the time commitment, you know, we're looking over the month of March to, and maybe into the first couple weeks of April to get this next training in place. So as long as we've got direction tonight from council on that, we can certainly work offline around dates.
So I have, I believe I've got three people who want to make comments. So we do have some time that we need to give input here. Let's go back to Councilmember Ray for his comments, and then Councilmember Hall and Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Chris Ray, just a couple of things. I think this is definitely something that we want to do. I think a two-hour session during the week as a study session makes sense. We are very fortunate, or not, in March that we have, we have five weeks in March, so we actually have an extra week on the 29th. That being said, the council president and I had talked about wanting to scoundrel that time to do some follow-up on our council retreat. And we had talked about at the retreat a couple of action areas, and using that week or that study session block as an opportune time to have one of our first follow-up sessions. So I would be interested to know what the rest of the council thinks about, you know, it's a matter of, it's not prioritization, but it's, you know, where would you like to go? I mean, we can go with the equity training on the 29th, or we can do a follow-up on some of the actions from the retreat. So I'd be very interested in your thoughts on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Interesting. I do like the idea of having our second, if it works for Benita, having our second training on this day. And I think, Stephanie, the way you laid it out sounds fine to me. I think revisiting our retreat sounds good too, though, soon. So I don't, I don't know how I justify that, but maybe leadership can go off and figure it out, come back. The only other thing I wanted to make sure to add to was I really, really enjoyed our last equity training, but I felt at the end, it just ended. And we didn't really have an opportunity to react and talk to each other about what we learned. And I didn't like that. If there is a way for us to make sure we have some time at the end of the next training, and this training might be structured so differently that it wouldn't even be a benefit to have that space, but I think maybe we have a conversation with Benita, and if it's similar in style to the training that we had in August, I think ensuring that there's space in the agenda for us to react and talk to each other about what we learned is important.
Can I address that one in particular? Thank you for reminding me of that, because that was also a takeaway that we heard from the November update, that you all desired some time to talk about this as a team. And so as we have been laying some groundwork with Benita to set up this next training, we ask that that be a part of the scope. So beyond the conversation around framework, that we have some time to interact and do just that. So thank you for calling that out. We have talked to her already about that.
Great. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I am interested especially in the action part of the meeting in terms of understanding how the framework would be applied in our different policy discussions and the different decisions that we make. So that part of the conversation or that part of the training appeals to me, and I'm very interested in that. As far as the scheduling, I think from my perspective, it would be helpful to know if there's a strong, if there's a strong feeling about the ordering here, because then we would take that into consideration with the scheduling. And as Council Deputy President said, we do have some other things that we were thinking about for these meetings, especially or namely the follow-up to the retreat and some of the process ambiguity items that came out of that retreat that we know we want to discuss and revisit. So it would be good to get a sense, if there is a strong desire to have those ordered in a particular way by council, that would be good for leadership to know. And then otherwise, I think we can take that, we can take this conversation back and look at the calendars and figure out a way that works so that we can have both topics scheduled in a order that works on the calendars.
Councilmember Hall, or Councilmember Mart, excuse me.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. This is Councilmember Mart. Yeah, I like first in, first out. We've been dealing with BLM and diversity and inclusion and equity issues since last summer. So I would like to, if we have additional work we want to do on that, I would like to do that first and then do the additional work out of the retreat. That would be, that would be my preference. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Bob Kowitz would like to make a comment.
I think just really to echo the comments.
Uh, I, I think just really to echo the council president, we'll, we'll be able to schedule, uh, what you would like. I think we are able to free up the 23rd as well as the 29th. And so if council leadership wishes to talk further about that, we can accomplish both during the month of March.
Thank you. And Council Member Goodman. Oh,
Nevermind.
Yeah, I see it now. Uh, are there any other comments? Uh, I, um, I look forward to the equity training. Um, I agree with Council Member Hall that, um, I would really like to see some time for us to interact. I think that's the most important thing that we can do to incorporate the, those ideas into what we're going to do as we move forward as a council. And then, um, I think that, um, the issues that, or the, the work items that were named, uh, earlier today, that would be included in another, uh, council retreat are also very important. So I would like to see us schedule both of those meetings, uh, for as soon as possible in the future, and I'll let leadership take care of that. Um, I know I do see that Council Member Goodman would like to make a comment.
Sorry, I changed my thing twice. Uh, Council Member Goodman here. So the only thought I had is to the extent that we can't have these, that if we don't get them super close together, I think if they're close together, um, the additional training and the follow-up, um, to the retreat, then I don't think it matters. But if, but if they're not, we're not able to get them close together, um, I, I think having a follow-up to the retreat first makes sense to the extent that we anticipate there would be any items that would come out of that follow-up that would re, that would require some work. Um, so if we change the council handbook for, for instance, then we could have that meeting. Um, and if there's anything that comes out of there about changing the handbook, then that can be worked on then while we're having, um, the, the follow-up training. That's what, that was my only thought. But if we're gonna have them close together, it doesn't matter. Thanks.
Okay. Director Johnson, do you have what you need?
I do. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
All right. We have worked through all of our items. Are there any comments, uh, from the council before we, uh, adjourn and also go into executive session? And I have some things I have to read before we, before we adjourn. So are there any comments before I do that? All right. Seeing none, I will go to the comments. Um, for the good of the order, I need, uh, need to talk about transition to WebX events. Uh, this is a reminder that our next council meeting on March 1st, the public will be able to join the meeting using their computer or handheld device via our new meeting platform, WebX Events. The public will be provided a link to the meeting in the meeting agenda and website calendar. The phone-in option will continue to be available. City council members may participate in an optional test session this Friday at 4:30 or 5:00 PM. And if you're interested, please email the clerk's office. And then secondly, we have a special council meeting. We will be holding a special council meeting immediately following this meeting to convene into executive session. We will use the same meeting link. So council members, please stay on this meeting. Um, there will be no further business. The study session is adjourned at 9:44. And, uh, we will reconvene. I'm gonna just take a look at everybody and see, do we want another five-minute break? No, I'm seeing no. Okay, we'll reconvene in a minute then. So the council-
Chair DeMichele, five minutes.